Good morning, I'm Bernard Green here at the Brookline Select Board and this is the regular meeting of the Select Board meeting at the Country Club, no, the Dog Course.
You wish.
Here in Brookline.
Those are country clubs.
For a workshop session, let's start off with any updates or comments from the Select Board and then I'll sort of introduce the meeting. No? Okay, so this morning's agenda will include presentations and discussions of the comprehensive plan, the long range plan roadmap, or 2030 roadmap, and the community health improvement plan. And I think people should think about these three planning efforts as a unit. For example, comprehensive and 2030 roadmap plans will include housing issues for people at all stages of their lives, lives, and affordable housing. This implies that we will, we have to be ready to address the additional health and human services needs of that larger population that we may be bringing to Brooklyn. So think about these three things in particular as sort of one unit and then how they can work together. And we'll, we can talk about that in more detail, specifics of that in more detail when the time comes. And then in the afternoon, we have a number of, so regular Select Board items, but probably most important is the DPW Public Ride Away Discussion. Now, we, last night, we got a lot of documents, I assume that people at least scanned them. We will not be voting on them at this meeting, but at the next meeting. So that's what, basically what we look forward to this, today's, at today's meeting. Let's see. Let's go into our miscellaneous calendar, question of approving the meeting minutes from March 4, 2025, any edits or corrections to those? No, I'm all approval of the minutes from March 4, 2025. On favor, please give us a say aye. I'm against, do you?
Aye.
I'm against, do you?
Aye.
Paul Lauren.
Aye.
David Thorne.
Aye.
Chair votes on.
Next, I'd like to take items 2B through 2M in this fashion. You may recall that item 2J was affected, the peer school guaranteed minimum, maximum price has been taken out and we will discuss it at the next meeting. Let's see, any questions or other items you'd like to take out?
I just want to flag for folks' awareness, because we got a couple of questions about that item, you know, we will take it up as part of the regular agenda on the 25th. But that request is a request to move money around, not to increase the scope of any work, but to increase the contingency in the construction budgets. There's money left over in some of the pre-construction consulting budget that we're moving out of that money, out of that bucket of money into the construction budget because of the uncertainty being generated in the tariffs right now. But the team will be here next week to discuss that in more detail with you, so I just want to flag for the public. I've been emailing asking, does this mean we're getting more, does this mean there's a, there's no change in scope?
Okay, let me get out of here, this is just a select, we're sorry, this is just the select word.
Chinese brand instead. Be the public.
Yeah.
So on favor of items 2B through 2M, see if anybody's saying aye. I'm against, do you?
Aye.
I'm against, do you?
Paul Lauren.
Aye.
Do you?
Thorne.
Aye.
Chair votes on.
Okay, next. Get into the real interesting stuff. And this is a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Planning Board. You have everyone here or online? If we're not online?
Mark is on.
Don't know where about.
Mark's still online.
This is your chair. Yeah, sorry, it's John. May I ask a couple of questions? I always hate to be the person doing this, but can we really start that if it said on the agenda that we would start it at 9:45?
I think because it says it's an approximation, in theory we could have, however, because it's planning board also noticed it definitely for 9:45, I do think we should probably wait until 9:45 to, to call the joint meeting.
And if it happens, I have one item that I didn't think quickly enough to bring up during public, or excuse me, board announcements.
Okay.
And so.
Do it now.
Hey, we can do it now?
Yeah.
And it's, yes, I'm going to, Chaz, I would call this if I catch you by surprise, but a lot of people are wondering what the news that circulated yesterday about a possible legislative fix for calling of meetings means for the prior announcement that we made in Brooklyn about the town meeting that's coming up and, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for reminding, I wanted to bring that up too.
Great.
So yes, we have been hearing now that there is the possibility that the legislature will fast track an approval of an extension of the current rules for hybrid meetings through 2027, the point dates are in 2027. There are many different competing bills about making this permanent, it does seem like what the legislature is doing is buying itself more time. I believe the governor has indicated she would look favorably on this and sign it, we could see it on her desk as soon as Friday. So the long and the short of it is that if that is passed, the current rules will continue to apply throughout, however, the one thing that we can't undo unfortunately is town meeting. The town meeting was not noticed as a hybrid meeting because of this concern. There was no request for the hybrid meeting, it has a result of that because we didn't know whether or not that would happen. So this town meeting is going forward as a town meeting in person, which means that participation remotely will be limited to those who have a reasonable accommodation request accepted. I'll say.
That's fine, you can keep going.
Okay. So unfortunately, that's just the nature of the beast, because we have to call town meeting by a date certain and must be more unaware of whether or not we were able to host the meeting in that fashion, we can't re-notice town meeting for that date anymore, I don't believe, so.
Can we check that, Chaz? Yeah, maybe we should check that.
Okay.
It's been noticed, you know, whether, you know, it would be really interesting to know, important to know if we can update the parameters.
Yeah.
Sure. Because it's still over two months away.
It is over two months, but I think the rule is like 90 days, but I'm, I will double check with town council and we will see what the timing is of that.
And the general meetings.
Right, I mean, we'll, we'll have to see, I mean, certainly, the, the meeting has been noticed, so if we, if we can do it, what we'd have to do is we'd have to basically gavel one town meeting in, gavel out, and gavel in a new town meeting. We couldn't reissue the notice for this one.
So just, I'm, I'm just a quick thought, Chaz.
Yeah.
I mean, so in past town meetings, the, the procedures for being remote and participating remote as defined and issued by the town clerk have, you know, certainly been communicated to town meeting after it had been noticed, so key procedures of when you could request a tablet, whether that tablet would be available for three days, or could you give him two days' notice? So the, the method of, of participating remote has been defined after the notice of town meeting, so it'd be really helpful to get.
Yes.
Legal.
Yes, we'll take a look at that. I think it's, it's worth, you know, trying to maximize access, so we will, we will take, we will dig into this. We can't, we can't recall current, that's the issue, so.
Okay, and Dan?
Good flag, John.
No, well, yeah, people were asking about it just this morning, so.
Hey, anything else? There's not.
If you want a quick update on the school review, maybe we do that, just because that's part of updates and announcements. The CLA team has been working for a week, they have their first meeting with the steering group of collective decisions this week, you know, work is progressing, I don't have any, any readouts as of yet. But I do just want to let people know that work is ongoing and they are, interviews, they have access to all our, all of our systems, all of our documents, so we're moving expeditiously on that front. I do just want to flag, I've heard some questions about, you know, what's the source of the gap, you know, where, is this an issue regarding revenue or expenditure? And I guess the schools have said most of that gap is an expenditures gap, we used to say that the schools projected expenditures were much lower than what their actual requests are. There is a less than a million dollar revenue gap, that is to say, the town's revenue projection came in a little less than a million dollars under. And then the reasons for that include things like the increased cost of healthcare, the increased cost of settling the police general C contract and so forth, but those are not, you know, I've heard people say, well, you know, was the town, did the town miss this somehow, town under project revenues? I actually think, based on where we've gone actually in the last three years and the unexpected things that we've had happen, we've actually were pretty good at projecting where the revenues are because we're not significantly under where we need to be, it really is unfortunately an expenditure side problem, so folks have just been asking, you know, are we off in our revenues, and the answer is not, you know, it's, it really is an actual, actual order of magnitude difference here, so.
Well, so Chaz, that's where we go, it's still the, the million dollar difference.
Yeah.
Is that a million more or a million less given?
A million less.
A million less, okay.
It's about, it's, I think it's between seven and eight thousand.
If we were sandbagging revenues and revenue is getting higher.
Yes.
And then minus any is that the schools are now above 4.3 million, they've reduced it to 4.3 from 8.2.
That right.
Okay, maybe I have more work to do.
Yeah, they have a meeting coming in on Thursday and I think another meeting next week.
So separate from, on Thursday, the auditorium is going to brief four of us on, you know, where they've gotten in the audit and I assume that we will, let, excuse me, in my case, let the Select Board know.
Yes.
If you're only where we are, so.
Yeah.
Be aware that that's coming. Okay, is it?
Not quite.
Well, do you want to maybe talk about the EPTAR dinner that some of us attended?
Oh, yeah, the three of us attended a EPTAR dinner, which is, as I understand, the end of Ramadan and a a end of the fasting.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
At the end of the fast for a particular day.
Yeah. Okay.
The very end of Ramadan is eat is eat.
Eat's for eat. Yeah.
Yeah. And it, it was an, I thought it was an incredible event and a beautiful church up on.
All Saints.
All Saints Church, Episcopal Church. And the program included a historical review of Islam in America, which goes back to the founding, not the founding of America, goes back to the original column, or original European settlement in America, that then included African slaves who were Muslim and their religious.
Including a Boston connection that Phyllis Wheatley, very famous Boston slave and poet, was apparently of the Muslim origin because when she would start writing as a child in the home she lived in in Boston, it appeared to be an Arabic script and that her earliest memories were her mother prostrating prayer in the, in the Muslim style.
Wow, interesting, wow.
So in addition to that, you know, they went through the ritual of ending the fast with dates, which they distributed to all of us, the first time I went to the EPTAR, I sort of reintroduced the dates and used it as a way of sort of starting my day when I'm not going to eat breakfast immediately. So, and then we had a really nice dinner, prepared by, prepared at the local restaurant, I think.
Apparently around the surrounding.
Pakistan.
Yes.
Pakistani restaurant. And, you know, very, very nice conversation with, with an important part of our community who will have, who are attempting to, you know, make more open contributions to, you know, civic life. Anything you want to add?
Nothing, that covers it.
Okay.
No, that's, that's good summary, thank you.
Okay, are we at 9:45? Yeah. Close. 25 seconds. I know when the planning board meeting started 7:30, that's exactly when I, 9:07, 25 or anything like that. So who can give the presentation?
The two of us, well.
Okay.
This is, are we, are we on time? We can start.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say just briefly that this is the comprehensive plan steering committee update, which is part of our work plan, I'm a liaison to the committee and the chair. This is part of our, in our work plan, it's periodically come before a joint, joint public meeting of both the Select Board and the Planning Board to update them on our progress. So that's the intent of this, there's been a lot of progress, a lot of hard work, there's still more to go, so. There we go.
Great. All right with you all, if we stand, it will help project down to the end, great. And I know also the presentation is down there, so you'll probably be focused on there, we won't take it personally.
We can maybe stand up here.
We could do that.
Yeah, yeah. Say right here, I can move. Yeah, why don't I move, so you have space to.
Before we get into the presentation, can we just confirm who is here from the planning board?
Steve, I can.
Come here, I guess.
You're so new, I didn't even recognize you.
We actually haven't been personally.
Right.
Mark's still online.
Playing board.
And Mark's still online. He's on the.
Is Janice caught on the planning board?
No.
No, okay, sorry, thank you.
Will you ever project that presentation?
Yes, I'm about to put up.
So we do have more, is it, is it separate from what's in our packet?
No.
It's the same process.
Same, okay.
Great, well, thank you so much for having us here today, as Paul said, we're excited to present some progress to you all on the comprehensive plan. We've been moving through the schedule, engagement, analysis, a lot of thinking about the vision and themes, so we can share with you where we, the community and the committee have arrived at. We'll start with a project overview and really just a reminder that this comprehensive plan is about looking to the future. So we're setting kind of about a 15-year vision and roadmap, we're working very much on the vision period right now, and then as we get further into the fall and winter, we'll dive into what that roadmap really looks like. This is being put together by an interdisciplinary team on the planning kind of consulting side, so hi, everyone, good morning, my name is Bree Hensel, I'm a principal and a co-founder of Agency Landscape and Planning, we're an urban planning and design firm based here in Cambridge, I'm joined by Jill Dixon, who is our project manager and a planner as well. We are also supported on the technical planning side by Innis Associates, who has a lot of experience in comprehensive planning in Massachusetts, as well as on the regulatory side, RKG Associates, who has done and is doing a lot of work for the town of Brookline, looking at kind of market economics and policy ideas. We're also joined by U Teal, who has done many comp plans in the region as well, they really focus on built form, urban form and development. And then finally by Bowman, who's thinking about some of the infrastructure systems, the, the kind of resilient side, but also really focused on mobility and transportation. And then you'll see on the other side, we have sort of our engagement team, so Agency is spanning both of those. Jill and I are constantly thinking about the interplay between community engagement and the technical data. But Grayscale Collaborative and Caesar McDowell are really focused on an equity framework and making sure that the community engagement is representative, inclusive of all the towns of Brooklyn. We're working with kind of an integrated approach to planning, so one of, one of my favorite and mentor urban planners is Mitchell Silver. He used to be the head of the A T and Planning Association and the New York City Parks Commissioner, and he once said, people don't go to cities and towns to see land. They don't go just to look at economic development, so really what they're looking for are these kind of integrated places where they can have great experiences, gather as a community, live a whole life, and so that's why this comp plan is thinking about kind of an integrated approach to planning that really builds on the American Planning Association's Sustainable Places Initiative. So we're kind of perking back always to these six guiding principles, thinking about holistic, livable built environment, harmony with nature, resilient economy, interweaving equity throughout, building a healthy community as a whole here in the town, and then keeping an eye towards regional relationships. Ultimately, as we get towards a plan that will be a framework for that vision for the future, this plan will also include ways to implement that vision, so thinking about policies for the built environment that might guide zoning or other regulatory changer, changes, a way to be a guide for future investments and also a way to kind of make sure you're on a solid fiscal footing with that investment. And then also will support, we hope, kind of ongoing community discussions that continue to evolve as the plan is. So a quick overview of schedule, you can see we're actually almost halfway through the process, but it's a four-phase process where we've really started with that pre-planning phase of confirming scope, confirming timeline, really data request, all those really important foundational elements. We're just getting towards the end of the initial visioning phase, so that's really about, you know, listening to the community as a whole, really thinking about what is the future for Brookline. All right now, in the heart of topic-based recommendations, which the first half of that yellow bar is really all about data analysis, where we are today as a community. And then we'll be shifting gears in the early fall, really switching over towards planning for implementation, so that's really about taking the community vision, thinking about what actions are really going to help realize that over time. So we wanted to share a quick update of progress to date. There's been a lot happening, first of all, we've had a lot of time reviewing past plans, you know, this, this comprehensive plan isn't really, this just comes out of the blue and just does its own thing, but it's really building closely on a lot of work that this town's been doing for years. We've also had a series of interviews with town departments to understand current priorities, current projects, initiatives of the comprehensive plan should be building upon. And this diagram really speaks to the role of the comprehensive plan, it's to really take all of the great work that y'all have been doing across a lot of different areas, from housing, like the housing production plan to, you know, referrals from town meetings, to small area studies focused on things, whether that's Chestnut Hill and other areas. We're, we're really taking on board all of those different projects, understanding when you put them together, what does that mean for the future? And how can we have all these policies in one spot that can really help guide on what's going to keep the town healthy in many different lenses? We've had a lot of community conversations, there was a big round of engagement last fall, we know some of y'all participated in that as well. That included everything from pop-up engagement at Brookline Day, at farmers markets, we had a, both a virtual and an in-person public workshop, there were both well-attended. We got a lot of comments, so we'll be sharing some of that feedback with you shortly. At the same time, we've been doing a lot of listening to people, we've been also doing a lot of analysis of data to really bring those two pieces together. So this is a snapshot, we called the data skim, this was just a first pass at some of the current trends and conditions in town that we completed last fall. This looked really comprehensively at, you know, community, changing demographics, we looked at economic trends when it comes to retail recovery and so on. Looked at who's moving to Brookline as well. So this is really a combination of where the town is today, but also what are some of those trends that have been changing over the past five and 10 years, and what does that say about what's up next? Equity and inclusion are really foundational to this effort, and so our colleagues at Grayscale put together an equity and inclusion approach that gives everything from guiding principles around engagement, really making sure that, you know, the process for developing this comprehensive plan is accessible to everyone. And so with their recommendations, we did a series of small group conversations to make sure that anyone that might face barriers to traditionally participating in planning processes has a way to participate and make their voice heard as well. So overall, across all of these different ways to give input, last fall, we had more than 10,900 community contributions, so that's, you know, postcards that were filled out, that's comments and online surveys, that's, you know, conversations and participation in small groups, and these are really good numbers. You know, it really, I think beyond just a high number, it's also a real diversity of perspectives that's really informing the way we think about the future of Brookline. So that future is starting to take shape, we are very early on it, but we're starting to kind of commoditize some of these emerging themes, and so we'll show that to you today. There's a number of different themes that go into the vision, you could really think of these themes as the way to tie community priorities to the plan's vision. They're shaped by feedback, they're shaped by that kind of integrated approach to planning, they're shaped by guidelines from the state about what comprehensive plan should look at, as well as the equity framework and the data analysis that Jill alluded to. They've also been really closely shaped by the town steering committee, who works very hard on a monthly or sometimes more than monthly basis to really help make sure that these themes and this plan is grounded in the town and its priorities and its voice. So the six emerging themes right now that we're working with, and these are going to be very important and foundational to the shape of the plan going forward, are expanded housing options, thriving commercial areas, climate action and resiliency, public well-being, inclusive neighborhoods, and mobility and accessibility, so Jill and I will show you a little bit about what each of those means. Also important to note, no worries, you're doing awesome on the slides, thank you. Equity and regionalism are cross-cutting, so they really inform every single one of those themes, and I'm trying to think of that as a touch point. So the first theme is expanded housing options, I think it's not a surprise to anyone that this is a priority and that housing in general in lots of ways feels very tight, both here in Brookline and then also in the region and the country, so everyone is thinking about that when it comes to supply, when it comes to affordability and attainability, to, to what does that housing provide and offer to support different shapes and sizes of the community? We've heard a lot about eating in place, a lot about the need for young adults to be able to find a home here, so this expanded housing options encompasses all of those different topics. So as we look forward, some of the key questions that this plan will need to address are, you know, really how can new housing opportunities be coordinated with transportation, open space access, facility investment services, all of that to make sure that, you know, expanded housing options are continuing to bring that high quality of life that Brookline is feeling known for. And really importantly, how can Brookline's housing better support the Brookline community? So these are questions that are going to be really fundamental as we move forward. The second theme that's been identified is thriving commercial areas, so there's a lot of different factors to this. I think there's a sense that the kind of commercial streets and, and centers within the town are a part of local identity, that they're really beloved special places where people can come together, get their daily needs met. So some of the key topics are around expanding commercial activity within those centers, making sure that, you know, small businesses are supportive, so there's fewer empty storefronts, enriching the identity of each place, and then also thinking about commercial centers as a way to create local employment and local jobs. So only about 10% of land in Brookline today is commercial land uses, and so this plan is really going to look at, you know, what opportunities are there to diversify the tax base? Key to that, I'll also be looking at retail opportunities, we've heard so much from the community about desires for retail, desires for active retail places to go and enjoy. And so we're really be looking at how to strengthen these existing centers in town. Climate action and resiliency is often one of the topics that community members who disagree about other points come together around. It's always really nice to see that that's sort of a rallying call, people really want to live in a place that has clean air, clear water, a clean future. And so that's true here as well, this is risen up as a priority, and the town has done a lot of good work already for us to build on. So climate action and resilience are thinking about clean energy futures, they're thinking, it's thinking about human comfort as it relates to a changing climate with key resilience, shade, and equitable climate action. We'll also be thinking about stormwater management and kind of landscape solutions for that. And more broadly, sustainable land use, how you think about transportation and land use together to make sure that we're living in a more broadly sustainable. So some of the key things we'll be looking at here is, you know, what is Brookline's role in regional climate solutions? And really, how can, you know, this comprehensive plan help support land use patterns and mobility that help reduce the overall carbon footprint? You know, this is one where regionalism is really more, because, you know, the climate, you know, air particles, water molecules, they don't know political boundaries, so this is really about, you know, what is Brookline's role in the region, and, you know, y'all really sit at an interesting spot, you're higher than a lot of your surrounding municipalities, you don't have to deal with flooding in the same way that they do, and so that puts you in a much better position fiscally because you don't have those big investments that some coastal communities around you will need to be looking over the coming years. Your urban forest is also a really great resource, it helps keep you cooler than a lot of places around. Your urban forest is also a really great resource. It helps keep you cooler than a lot of places around you. So, you know, this plan really is to think about, what does that mean for the future of, you know, Brookline's already an attractive place to live, but what does this mean as you look ahead to? Both for people wanting to live here and both some of the benefits that this might have from a fiscal perspective. The fourth theme that the community and the steering committee have really elevated as a priority is the idea of public wellbeing. And that here in the town of Brookline, that has a lot of dimensions that are really important to think about in a comprehensive plan. The first is town fiscal sustainability, the presence of historic and cultural resources across the town and their preservation into the future. Providing good, high quality public services and facilities that match the needs of the community and meet them where they are. And also providing access to great parks, natural resources and recreation experiences that align with trends and community needs as well. So for this one, we've been taking a close look at existing facilities across town, everything from parks and recreation, schools and so on. And this one really looks at, you know, how will changes in the town's population affect the need for these varying services and facilities? And big questions here are just how can Brookline's land use and physical planning choices enhance both the town's fiscal sustainability as well as quality of life for residents? So this topic is really cross cutting. It really brings together a lot of things from the economic lens to quality of life and what it means for residents. Theme five could almost hold everything within it. This has been a really important topic to think about kind of reinforcing and supporting inclusive neighborhoods in the future. There's a lot of support and love, I think, with the different and unique neighborhoods of Brookline. And so. This, this topic is really about thinking about how those places remain connected, safe into the future. Have walkable, walkable neighborhoods and kind of the option of action for different modes to bike, to walk, to not always have to get in your car. Then each place has ways to reinforce its own identity, both in a built form and through placemaking. And that those neighborhoods are healthy, beautiful, attractive environments into the future. This one really looks at, you know, how can Brookline remain relevant and welcoming to a diverse group of residents with changing housing needs? So we'll be looking at, you know, as communities are aging, as there's more young families, you know, how can Brookline's housing and neighborhoods better support everyone at all stages of life? And finally, I think you've already heard us allude to the connection of transportation and mobility to some of these other topics. But also really important to think about and make sure that the mobility system here within Brookline works well on its own. So mobility and accessibility as a theme is thinking about complete streets, so places where you can mix cars, bikes, people, transit. Thinking about accessibility and kind of distribution and proximity across the town. Thinking about that multimodal and regional connectivity, especially transportation is one of the themes where. It's not always something that can be solved purely as a at a local level within the streets, but relies on that regional supply of transportation. So one key data point here is that 29% of households in Brookline don't own a vehicle. As we think about, you know, that really balanced approach to transportation, we'll need to think about how do you continue to expand options for people to get around? Whether they enjoy driving, whether they want to get around by walking, transit, bicycle or other modes. So that's really a summary of where we are to date. And to give you a quick overview of what's coming up next, we'll really be continuing to fine tune the vision statement as we move forward. From a technical point of view, we'll be working on what are called growth and change alternatives. So these are essentially stories about Brookline's future that rely really heavily on data. As well as forecasting, what if you take today's data, fast forward 10 years, what might that look like for the town? So that'll be exploring what if trends continue and what if the town does something different? We'll have an online survey that focuses on challenges and opportunities as well as a roundtable this spring to get additional community input. And then our next really big milestone for the community outreach will be in the early fall, where we'll share the draft vision statement and also also show these alternatives and get feedback on desired directions for the town.
And a big appendix.
There's always more.
Any questions from the select board or lines?
I didn't have a question, but I did want to make a comment. I first I collected to recognize Jake. Sir Jake, Jake is our planning department lead. And he has done an amazing job in keeping us all connected. So this is a very polished presentation, but I can tell you the sausage that. Thank you behind the scenes is not always that way. Jake is doing an incredible job. And also we have a steering committee. Of 17 individuals that were appointed by this board. And last night, Jake, does this include the most recent stuff we've voted on? So, but we, we, we've been meeting to take all the input from the surveys that the agency and others have collected for us. And have given the information to the steering committee. And the steering committee is the ones that has come up with these themes and these topics. Of course, Linda is our representative from the planning board in the handling. And, you know, it's, it's a tremendous amount to bring this. And it really is a community driven vision. And the steering committee is representative of the broader community. And we've got a lot of different opinions about. The choices that we need to make. So I just, I do want to recognize Jake and also Kara, because Kara spends a significant portion of her time. And the steering committee, because it's a significant investment of time for people to attend these meetings.
Okay, Mike. So first of all, that was very, very helpful. That was a very review. And there are a couple of questions that that come up. One is. When we talk about. Commercial areas and there's an obvious impact on the sense people have of. What the community feels like if there's a robust commercial, commercial area or commercial areas. There has been and there continues to be a shift in shopping habits.
Right.
To, to online. And when you talk to store owners, in particular, retail stores, not restaurants, because restaurants, you can't, you know. You can't buy a good meal from Amazon. But when you talk to shop owners, their concern is that there continue to be. A variety of stores because that attracts traffic. And without, you know, if you have all restaurants and two or three stores left, the store could go down. Because there's, you know, there's nobody who's going to make a trip to the stores. And, you know, connected to that. There have been a lot of discussions, especially in the Harvest Street corridor, about how increased population. Brings more, more traffic, even if there's been a shift, some part of that increased population will go into the store. So how do you? How do you match that interest in connecting increases in population in the commercial areas? And the interest, interest in, in the increase in, in bringing people back to stores with some of the other. Elements like, for example, there's a comment in here, maintaining architectural integrity and character of the neighborhood. And when I hear that, I think that means somebody is very concerned that there not be a lot of change in the streetscape. And yet, if you're going to accommodate. Commercial and residential, there needs to be a changes. We won't all fit into the existing buildings. So how do you put all of that together in a plan? That, you know, will have some practical, practical values.
Yeah. So I mean, I think you're getting exactly the meat of that topic and also how all these topics are connected, as you said, and so those are. What you've raised, I think, are key fodder for some of the next steps around that roadmap. So within each of these themes. We'll be developing kind of the recommendations that move the plan forward, which could be policy, they could be investment. I think what you mentioned fits in both of those. It could be small business support programs that are recommended. And you're exactly right, that retail is shifting, right? And that people are finding that. The way to be successful is covering not only things to buy that people need, but an experience that people want to be part of. And that that's more than just the kind of retail square footage. It's the streetscape, it's the public realm. It's the space around it where you can run into people and be part of the community. So we'll be thinking about the thriving commercial centers very much as this. Broader environment, as well as, like you said, you need people to shop there, whether those are employees in new businesses or restaurants.
I have a related question to Mike's. So I don't think it's necessarily that people don't want the streetscape to change at all. I think it's more that they want uniqueness and they don't want to see just some generic glass box. And is there a way to create some kind of win win incentive where you can have that sort of. Creative or traditional architecture that fits into the neighborhood? So that the streetscape part is satisfied, but you're also advancing the needs of commercial vibrancy and housing.
Yes, definitely. I mean, I think this. What we mentioned, Uteal, who's on the team, this is something the agency thinks a lot about too, not just the kind of. Number side, but the qualitative experience and the kind of design recommendations too. So I think that's definitely, yeah.
And then relatedly about the mix of the type of stores that you have in a certain district. I think you had mentioned this in a prior meeting call about how in New York City, there are certain incentives that are offered to.
Use.
To reuse. And I'm wondering if that's something that's done in Massachusetts to what extent, what would that look like?
Yeah, that's really interesting. I mean, I think we. We recently worked on a project for the city of Boston called the Boston Design Vision. And that involved a lot of community engagement where we heard exactly what I'm saying, that people really want this. They see their neighborhoods as being about this mix of retail uses that we don't always align exactly with what the market wants to supply. And there's all sorts of different levers you could pull. Incentives are some. We also found new development, those glass boxes you mentioned. They tend to build really big, kind of generic ground level retail. And so there's ways that you can think ahead to say. That needs to, we need to be providing not large floor plates, but actually subdivided many entrances on the street. Smaller spaces where small businesses can get startups and things like that. So there's a lot of different ways, I think, to think about making sure that you have the mix that aligns with the community vision. From a physical or a policy standpoint.
Yeah, I just want to touch upon this issue of identity and character streets. This was a, we had. A lengthy discussion last night about this. And the, and the presentation, of course, hasn't been completely. Up to date because we did finish this late last night at 9:00 PM. But, you know, the, the issue around identity and character is really about the embracing. And celebrating that we have different neighborhoods and that there's different identities, right? The, the uniqueness of the neighborhoods, the different streetscapes are important, but we don't want to communicate that, that. That doesn't mean that we can have, we still need to have. So how do we balance retaining identities and uniqueness and character? Right? Character doesn't mean that you can have a white box, I guess, with some character. You know, but my point is, we need to be able to embrace the, the identity of different neighborhoods while continuing to allow growth to happen. And that's, that's what came up in my discussion last night. Jake, what did we end up calling that bullet? Do you remember? Because we spent a lot of time on, on, on character. I'm looking for you on the spot, but it's important.
We, I think we ended up with unique neighborhood character.
With unique neighborhood character. Does not mean don't grow. Thank you.
They commented about multiple access points, multiple entrances and small spaces. So it's interesting to hear that because it's one of the things we're talking about with the Chestnut Hill West. You know, to what extent do we want to? Either zone for that if we can, if we can, or provide incentives for, for the property owners to, to provide that. And it's. Very much, that, that kind of design appeals to neighborhood residents much more than the. Generic box with a large scale retail. They look across the street, across Route 9 at the street. Those are all big spaces. And they attract a different kind of retail and a different. Excuse me, different sort of shopping.
Generate a lot of tax revenue.
They do indeed. Yeah, they do.
That's why I think you need to bring in character is really nice because you have all the different things that you need. You do need to judge your grocery stores sometimes too. Yeah.
See, first of all, I wanted to mention that I noticed that a couple of other members of the planning board are with us online. I see Andrea Brew there and Andrea. And I briefly saw Blair Hines, who says he's traveling and may be able to stay for a bit of this meeting. So glad to see them both here. I thought that was a very smooth presentation of where you are. I'm concerned that. I think you started almost a year ago and we're like halfway through. And I see a lot of very, you know, nice kind of descriptive narrative about the things we'd like to see. But it looks to me like it seems there's an awful lot of work to be done to sort of. Turn this into strategies for how to implement these things. And, you know, from the planning work perspective, you know, we've been anxious to see. Zoning change to help implement some of the things that are high barriers. And also, I'm the, I'm the planning board rep. Through the Housing Advisory Board, and we had, Jake gave us an update a couple of weeks ago where one of, housing was not one of the themes. And like, what happened to housing? So I'm glad to see this, I don't know if they're in a rank order, glad to see that housing is now the number one theme. And picking up on what Mike started off by saying, I think there is a, a complete nexus between increasing housing opportunities. And vibrant commercial areas, and David mentioned the same thing. Increasing housing within our commercial areas brings more people to those commercial areas, provides more opportunities. And there are some, we've had any number of plans that keep repeating the same thing. We need to allow for a more intensive development of our. Major commercial areas, including St. Mary's. We've done a plan to Harvest Street. I think it falls short of really facilitating more development by limiting height. To only four stories. Washington Square, there are deep sites in both Washington Square and St. Mary's. I just saw on Brookline dot news, the plan to redevelop. Two, one property that has the Japanese bakery and wine cast for wine store.
Wine press.
Wine press. The owner, Wine Press is moving to another location, St. Mary's, the East Boston City, it's bang further up the street. The Japanese bakery is going to have to relocate. The owner of that property is planning to build a second story. Increase it from a one story building to a two story building. That, which I assume is what zoning allows, which the Florida issues want. That to me seems crazy. We should have allowed for more density in St. Mary's and Washington Street a long time ago, Washington Square. And it frustrates me that we've had to sort of sit and wait for this process. Before we can make what I think are long anticipated changes, the housing production plans, both of them from 10 years ago and a couple of, five years ago, a couple of years ago. A very useful study of the commercial areas from 2018. All these plans talk about allowing mixed use, multi-story development in our commercial areas. And it's about time we sort of. Got some work back.
David. So just a follow up question I have to what you just said. I, I sense that a lot of people would support. Moderate upzoning in these major commercial districts along the lines of what you articulate. And my sense of the concern, getting back to neighborhood character, is more around the aesthetics of it. And so do you see any way to make the aesthetics pleasing while similarly having that type of upzoning?
Well, I have to say, as an architect.
That's one man's opinion, just remember, it's just one person.
As a fellow of the American community of architects and a long premier as both an architect and urban designer. The, the result of the Harvest Street plan and the detailed aesthetic requirements make me crazy. And, you know, I, I guess I just innately object to having rules for what everything has to look like. I know our president has just decreed that all better architecture once again has to be classical. They're selling off all of the modernist buildings. They're selling off, you know, the HUD headquarters and FBI, all these models. They're getting rid of them because the president doesn't like that. The agency in the word that designed the building. So I, I personally object to. Having, you know, wanting to make everything look like what's around, top down. So we stop planning.
Yeah. I, I would second my colleague's remarks, but, you know, some of the guidelines were just way too specific and, and they came to us after they were already. Established that idea. We each have our, our beef. One was every balcony had to have a. Brackets, brackets and doors had to have an 18 inch kick. Like that was just way too specific for, for any kind of. Construction. And we later also went through materialist, the idea of what's. What's currently, you know, materials that are used for construction that aren't, you know, going back to 19th century things, but. Beyond that, I mean, that, that's part of.
And then do you reference, just to be clear, you're referencing the form based zoning guidelines?
How the guidelines interact.
I'll put it a little bit differently. My, my point was more about how do we avoid the sense of being in any town in USA? Not necessarily over regulation. Not necessarily over regulation. I understand your concern there. I just think, how do we avoid being like any other community in the country and losing that sense of Brookline is special? That, I mean, more on those lines.
Well, you know, I don't know. I mean, one of the images on the commercial districts, I think they were nice collages. I saw the new hotel at the corner of Brookline Avenue.
Right.
I think that's a nice looking building.
Yeah.
It's glass, but it's not, it's a gla- it's not a box. It's actually got a little few curves on it, but I think that's a handsome building. Uh maybe not everybody likes it. I mean, a few years ago, the planning board approved the expansion of what's now like the Korean church in Brooklyn Village. A lot of people hate that. You know, I think that's a nice piece of architecture, sort of a modern piece connected to a colonial, you know, chapel.
I, I think, what, can I just say one identity here? That part of this process is not only getting information from the community, but educating the community as well. I mean, looking at, at modern materials, how they can interact with our, yes, historic structure. We're not gonna tear those things down. That is not the point. We have a lot of one-story buildings in our commercial area. I, I beg you, they're not great place savers, you know, they're just, you know, other things can go in.
Okay. Uh, Mark? Mark, I see you, but I wanna ask Chad first.
Just, I'm sorry, it's a little, a little perhaps orthogonal for what we're discussing here. Um, one of the, one of the other poles of the uh piece is climate adaption and resilience. And we talked about how we are fortunate in some ways as a community and that we have very few areas that are in floodplain. Even with the revised flood maps, which I'm gonna come across at this town meeting, you'll see there's just not that many areas that female police are subject to, you know, the risks behind your blood. But I've been saying this since I took this job. What keeps me up at night is not groundwater, it's stormwater.
Right.
Um, it's the fact that as the climate warms, we're gonna have harsher and wetter winters. Um, and that's gonna, that's gonna require us to think variously, thinking about permeability of our surfaces. Uh, the retention of, of, you know, uh sinks for that, where is the water going, making sure that our stormwater networks are upgraded and current. So I think, just, you know, as we yeah, a part of this, I want us to keep in mind as we go forward is that adapting to a changing climate doesn't necessarily mean combating sea level rise, right? Unfortunately, that's not our problem. Our problem is actually in some ways more insidious because you can't see it until it's too late. Um, so I would just, as we think through how to put all these pieces together, making sure that we incorporate and work in conjunction with Sustainability Division to talk about how Climate Action and Safety Plan feeds into this. What the requirements are gonna be for us to build and develop a changed climate.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah.
Mark?
Sorry, me?
Yes.
Bernard, you referring to me?
Yes, I am.
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you. First of all, I I'd like to say that, oh, gee whiz. First of all, I like to say that I think it was a, a great presentation and I guess you're at a point now where you're, you are moving forward for uh the meat of the, of the, of the planning. Um, there, there were two comments I wanted to make um regarding um the, 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 the six topics that you discussed. Um, one, in terms of inclusive neighborhoods, I was hoping that you could include uh something related to con- the physical continuity of, of neighborhoods. Um, not, not only the, the people part and architectural part, but the physical continuity. I'm sure that you agree with that. And I would, I would like to see that in terms of imaging uh mo- more in terms of trying to define what the character of a neighborhood is. And not necessarily saying to you that it should be modern or it should stay the same or whatever, but basically you know, we as a regulatory body have to deal with this thing about not detrimental to the neighborhood. And if we, if, if we allow for, you know, a special permit, so it's sort of a situation where if we had a definition to go by, where it had a set of rules or guidelines, probably guidelines of what the character of a neighborhood is, or the different neighborhoods in, in the town, that would help us to you know, to make decisions and adjudicate things that relate to our decisions. Um, the other thing that I wanted to say about the commercial areas, I listened to an interesting discussion on that, and I'm participating in, or I did participate, have been participating in the Boylston Street um corridor studies, is that I, I would not like to see us lose the uniqueness of, of the village concept for, for our commercial areas. You know, if, if we still look at it from the standpoint of, you know, um smart design and, you know, two-story inclusion inclusionary housing and so forth, that at least what we do is we think about that our commercial areas, which are village-like, what division of that would be in the future, because that's different from other places, and it's different from obviously what some visions of, of commercial com- commercial design would be. So I think that, that that's the difference uh that we ought to include in terms of the imagery. And what we don't wanna do is lose our uniqueness as, as a, as a, as a cultural town and historic town. Um, and knowing that the town was basically you know, incorporated in seventeen oh five and, and zoning didn't come in until nineteen twenty-two, that mostly the entire town was developed without zoning initially. So as we develop our uniqueness and the idea of what we are in terms of our image, I think we should, should understand that we have a lot of exceptions that we should probably keep or try to make special and keep the uniqueness of what, what our, what our town is. But I think that, that comes in the next part of your work, and I'm looking forward to see that. Looking forward to see that. Thank you.
Uh, Mike, before you go, I wanna sort of shift to another topic that I think really can't be missed here. Uh, throughout your uh presentation, you use the phrase uh all current and future Brookliners. And, you know, that raises the issue of, you know, the sort of demographic um, demographics of, of Brookline, which anonymously, right, is in the middle of, you know, J P, um Dorchester, Roxbury, and we still are a town that is ninety-five percent non-black. Which, I mean, it's just kind of strange. So, so un- unless we're gonna continue that, I think that the planning office has to do best, how do you make sure that the future is not gonna replicate the past? Um, and I think that that includes, you know, active uh marketing type of uh efforts, but also other things. And, and it's not just, I mean, I think that too often we think of that in terms of affordable housing. I mean, it has to be beyond that. And, you know, because there are a lot of, for example, black professionals who, you know, moved to Lexington or, or some other strong places um who could, could live in Brookline, you know, with a lot of transportation act, um transportation assets. So I, I think that needs to be clearly articulated in the process.
Thanks.
Mike?
Um, so, um, almost everything that's been said in the last um, uh, in the last several minutes, uh has a zoning theme attached to it somewhere. Uh, and so one of the challenges, I'm sure, I'm listening to what you're talking about and your complaints about the prescriptive nature of the form-based zoning. And okay, that's been loosened up somewhat, so I hope that that, that's helpful. And uh comment that, you know, we really probably need to go higher than four stories along Harvard Street, which I agree with. Um, all of these things link to, all these discussions about zoning specifically, link to actually achieving what you're trying to do here. Um, and the question I have is, where is there a discussion of zoning in the comprehensive plan? That where does it belong? To what extent does it, uh, does it belong in there?
So I, I mean, I, I will defer to Kara, but I'll give you my, I'm not, you're asking me.
Yeah.
So my zoning certainly um is, is playing a major role in what, when we do the data analysis of future state.
Yeah.
So you're limited by what your current zoning is. So if you did nothing, here's how the town would grow and where it would likely grow, right? Um, the values that are coming out of the process of themes and topics is gonna say, what are the alternative scenarios for, for, for growing? And what is the, and importantly, what does the community think about it? I know there's a lot of opinions, individual opinions about how Brookline should grow and where and how high. But that's not community vision, that's individual opinions. So what we're committed to doing, and we're gonna continue to do is ask the community, it's a community-driven process. It's not one person or two people that have an opinion. We're getting input from the community. And when uh the future state scenarios come out, we will then survey the community and ask them, do they want ten-story buildings? Maybe, maybe the community wants ten-story, ten-story buildings. Maybe they don't. Uh, but this is certainly a community-driven plan, and zoning will flow out of that. I'll talk, uh, ask Kara to address when and how the zoning uh, you know, get affected by this. The comprehensive plan is not doing zoning, but we do need to, we need to find a something effort, but yeah.
Paul, I just wanna say that a number of the previous plans, the housing production plans, that commercial area plan, were both very broadly community-engaged processes, which had many, many participants, and the ideas and recommendations that came out of them are not my ideas. They were a broad community consensus about what people wanted to see happen.
Okay.
Can I?
Well, I wanna ask, I just wanna ask Kara, she wanted to address the zoning.
And John, and then Andrea, I see you.
Me, me, oh, John, yeah, oh, thank you. Um, so stepping back, um going all the way back to near the beginning of the presentation and the engagement process. And I s- took note that the largest number of, you know, engagements was for the online survey. Um, there are people who participate in every online survey they can find. And there are people who never participate in online surveys. And I sometimes get the feeling that um we're, we're using these very, you know, uh useful uh tools. But are we figuring out if what we got was a representative sample of the consensus of opinion in the town? So, so what is, what is your take on that?
Yeah, it's a really important question, and that's something we keep a really close eye on. Um, one of the things we do where we can assess demographic information to understand who we are hearing from, to figure out how it is you know, who are we hearing from, how does that contribute to townwide demographics and where are the gaps? And that's one of the reasons there was such a focus on those small group conversations, to understand who's not able to do an online survey, who's not able to come to the public workshops, and how do we have a space? It's not just, you know, answer one question, you know, going your way, but those were really in-depth conversations about, you know, what do you need to succeed in Brookline? What's missing? Um, and that really turned up a lot of themes around like housing quality that we hadn't heard from other communities. There were a lot of comments about culturally relevant businesses that we hadn't heard otherwise. Um, people were saying, you know, I wanna shop and, you know, go to businesses in Brookline, and there aren't things that meet my needs. Yeah. So as we think about this holistic planning, you know, the future of our retail quarters also depends upon like attracting diverse people to come and have shops that are interested in them. So I think those conversations really help show, you know, to lift up a lot of topics and also to show some of the interconnective nature of how you know, everyone's opinions on different topics. Actually, there's a lot of common goals that can support them.
So um, i- i- if I may just continue with a couple, um, sort of follow-ups. Um, you know, continuing on this same sort of line of freshly, um I, I, I didn't hear um preservation mentioned very much, you know, and, but I, you know, from my experience, and it's been a long decades, many decades' experience in Brookline. Preservation is really important to, you know, substantial number of people in Brookline. And also, if you, there's been a wonderful series in uh Brookline dot news, right, where they just ask people tell us your story, tell us, you know, why you came to Brookline, how you found a place to, you know, call home in Brookline. It's amazing how much people love Brookline the way it is.
Yeah.
You know, and so that sense of what are the things that people want to leave the way they are isn't, I don't feel that that's communicated in this kind of an engagement process, because what you get are wish lists. And wish lists are great, everybody should have them, but you don't find out if people really want what they say they want until you show them what it would mean to have it. And a, a wish list for something that people think would be great for the town, if you say, but would it be good on your street? Can get a completely different result, you know? No, I was thinking of, you know, the other part of town, something else's street, you know? Um, so I, I just am bringing these things up so that we try to keep that in mind because future planning tends to become prescriptive. But it starts by being, let's be expansive and no limits on what you say we, you wish you had. But at the end of the day, uh, we have to be able to afford changes that stem from these planning processes. But we may find ourselves in the middle of a completely different and unexpected crisis. I'll just throw out as an example, I don't think we have this prospect, but people are starting to worry a lot about water supplies. And the, the aging of the whole infrastructure of water systems. And if the day ever comes, you know, a decade, two decades from now, where people start having problems with water coming out of the tap, their priorities are gonna change completely as to what we should be focusing.
Yeah. Uh, before I go to Andrea and, and Tommy, um, I just wanna add something to what John said, and that is when we survey people in Brookline, we're getting elderly homeowners, older women, they like.
Yeah.
Um, and um, you know, other characteristics that don't really reflect the fact that, for example, uh more than, way more than half of our homeowners or our residents are renters. Um, a lot of them are sort of temporary residents. And those, uh, those are, those are groups that we have to make sure that in the comprehensive planning, we're, we're accounting for. Even the temporary residents, because, you know, we, we do want our community to be hospitable to people who come and spend time at the Longwood Medical Center and go on to wherever. So that, that's one thing I wanted to sort of add to what John said. Um, Andrea?
Yep, also following up to what John said, um, I understand that it's, this is a community process. And so I'm wondering how you balance um, the community wish list or community needs from these surveys with experts um, such as architects, planners, financial people, um, in making decisions, the best decisions for the town. Um, I think the Harvard Street Corridor is an example of sort of be careful what you wish for, and I'm concerned that a lot of uh laypeople have these wish lists, but don't really understand the results that they could get or or the effects. And I'd like to know how you balance that out.
Yeah, these are great questions. And I think, um you know, just to comment first on the engagement comments that have been coming up, we're thinking very actively about the next rounds of engagement and how they specifically reach out to those who we haven't heard from yet. In a way, that first, the engagement that's been done to date is a good diagnosis of kind of what's um, you know, what's missing. It tells us where the gaps are. And so there's an engagement committee, a subcommittee or a small group um, as part of the steering committee, who's kind of actively thinking about that right now, as we do somehow reach in the summer, that's more sort of meeting people where they are, and then gear up for our next big round of engagement in the fall. How do we make sure that we close some of the gaps? So very much appreciate that feedback. And then also this question about trade-offs, I think we're really excited to head into this next wave of looking at the growth and change alternatives. And using those kind of structured questions, looking at current trends, what will happen if we stay the course of where we are versus where can we start to move some needles to get more towards different visions? Um, you're right that there's not singular consensus, right? And so we're gonna be testing different visions, and then that will give us some sense of the trade-off both in terms of, you know, spatial land use, um, uh, growth and change in lots of different ways. And so I think that's gonna be a really interesting part of this process. Um, it's, it's a component of comprehensive plans that you don't always see. Um, comprehensive plans don't always include that step, and so I think it's gonna be a really great moment, and it's great that the town in Brookline is taking that on to grapple with those trade-offs. Um, and really get to look at it in both a quantitative and qualitative way. Totally double, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Bernard. Um, so I apologize if you went into greater depth on this during your presentation and I was able to take notes of, but a, a term I keep hearing, kicked around here, a couple of terms, talking about unique neighborhood character, neighborhood identity. And I was just curious about your process in trying to better define what in my experience can sometimes be a really mushy term.
Yeah.
Depending on how people are using it and what context and what they're looking for when they use that term. It could mean a million different things. So when we're talking about that, I was just curious about your process. Are you looking at just the built environment, really looking at historical aspects of the neighborhoods, cultural aspects? You know, are these neighborhoods where there's more turnover, less turnover, and just trying to better nail down what we're talking about when we're talking about neighborhood characters, so it doesn't So it doesn't turn into a mushy buzzword if anyone can use to push their own agenda.
Yeah, yeah, very well said. And I think we think too of Mark's comments. I really like the term physical continuity and then kind of the unique moments within that. So I think we do, we think very much about all those different aspects that you mentioned in the data analysis. But we also listen to community feedback about what, that was one of the questions I think that we had conversations about in the first phase of engagement, what are the unique features of your neighborhoods? Oftentimes, it is the physical dimensions, and many times it's business too, it's a restaurant, you know, it's a memory. And so those Brookline stories that were mentioned, those are really important too. So we try to capture both the things that are really place-based and then also, you know, less spatial too.
Sorry, just a follow-up. As far as the data analysis goes, I mean, how proprietary is your data analysis? Like how much granularity are people at Brookline going to have if they want to really dig in and look at how you analyze these things?
Yeah. I looked at Jake and Kara, any thoughts on how we kind of edit and share some of that? I would say none of it's proprietary. Everything we're doing is for the town. And so we're using the steering committee as, and Karen, Jake, and Paul and Linda as kind of the first sounding board to make sure that the data is correct. And, you know, and to make revisions that it's soundproofed, but that it's very charitable. And it's been, we have a lot of committee members who are really interested in the data. So we have a data group as well as an engagement group that's diving into some of the assumptions to go into the growth and change analysis. I'm not sure actually what's in the appendix, but all of our slides next tend to have appendices because we want to share the story and then give people a way to.
Mike, first, and just remember, we have five minutes before this stuff gets over. I would like to at least keep on track to the extent that's possible.
Well, there's one, we're talking about data analysis, and I want to come back to what you said, Bernard, about, you know, what the demographic makeup, the racial makeup, makeup of the town, the demographic. There's one slide in here about data analysis, is who is moving to Brookline? Twelve thousand six hundred and eighty-nine new residents moved to Brookline in 2021. That's basically twenty percent of the population. Now, maybe the other eighty percent stays here for fifty years, but there is this very substantial turnover. And as you say, fifty percent of people here rent. One of the most powerful comments that I, that I can recall about schools is that Brookline is an unusual place in that it's an urban place with good schools where people can rent the schools rather than having to buy. So you have a different income, an income profile of people who rent as a consequence. And they, when they come here for schools, they may stay here for a certain period of time and then leave after the kids are out of the schools. The, that, that data, that bit about, well, who's moving in, who's, and who stays here? I think that really, we really need to look at that pretty carefully to understand what's going on in the town. And so, and that's a wonderful piece of information I hadn't seen. I had no idea.
Of course, people are leaving too.
Yeah, of course, yeah. That's what, that twenty percent moves through, stays a couple of years, and then they go in consistently.
Yes, just briefly, I think Tom made a very important point, that when we're talking about neighborhood character, we need to understand what that means. And to the extent that each neighborhood could maybe, as part of this process, define what are maybe the three or four characteristics that define your neighborhood? So we have something tangible to deal with, rather than this amorphous concept, I agree that's very important. And that's probably a lens we ought to utilize in general for this process and for any zoning change, to be able to understand in tangible terms, what are we looking for? And how do we measure whether we're progressing toward it? And I think another approach, another important lens we need to utilize is the economic. John touched on this, can we afford what we're asking for? And is it something that is going to help reduce our structural deficit? Would it actually exacerbate our structural deficit? We have to look at economic realities too. And I think that's important for any potential zoning change.
Yeah, 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 but, but picking up on Mike's point, you know, about the interesting data point, you know, twenty thousand move in. Twelve thousand and twenty, is that right? Yeah, sorry, yeah, sorry. One of the things that, that particular piece of data, I've never seen taken into account, how many of those are students? Moving into student housing, moving in student housing, out of student housing, into student housing. And it makes it seem like, you know, Brookline has no core. I mean, if twenty percent of us turn over every year, I mean, my gosh, where's the core population in the town?
Well, that's what I say, eighty percent may very well stay here.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I, I think that it raises the question, like, who are we planning for? You know, and I, I hope we're planning for the core population, not that, you know, we, we, we leave everything up to the old timers and the long-time, you know, residents. But they're the ones who are more likely to be here five years or ten years from now when, when these visions, you know, are put into place.
I don't think we can ignore those who are transitioned through here though. Mark, or else?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that we need to try and avoid regulation overreach because it cuts both ways in terms of whether it's progressive or whether it's conservative. And what we need to do is, is tread a middle ground, a middle path that tries to reflect, you know, not only what came in the past, what came in the future, and I realize that that's very hard to do. But I think that, that when we get data from the sources that we're talking about, and then we argue about the sources and what the value is and the weight given to each source, I think we have to keep in mind that regulation overreach is, is a result of some of these things. And we should think, be thinking about guidelines rather than absolutes.
Good, thank you. Thank you for a very enlightening and well-prepared presentation.
Thank you all so much for the very helpful comments.
Okay, next, we have our Road to Twenty Thirty Roadmap. And think about this discussion in the context of the comprehensive plan, thank you, discussion. Thank you. Okay, Tiffany, tell us about the Twenty Thirty Roadmap.
Yes, Tiffany, I'll give us this in time, administrator for operations. This has been a part of an ongoing discussion that we've been having at these work sessions. And I think from hearing your feedback, loud and clear, we worked together to pare down the original kind of RFP that we had put together for developing a strategy or roadmap. So the town administrator, Carrie, me, Mike, Paul, we met together to look at this Twenty Thirty roadmap proposal, which is really an internal document to guide executive leadership administration in our upper management in the town through a four- to five-year time horizon. And I found a model that I think really aligns with what you all have been sharing with us, which is we don't want a plan to just sit on a shelf, and we want something to be tied to concrete operational and programmatic changes and objectives. And so that's called the Strategic Public Leadership Model. And eventually, it's connecting the work of a traditional strategic plan with more focus on activities needed to actually implement that and evaluate it. And so it's having a facilitator come in through a series of meetings and events with you all, but then also with department and division heads to translate that into management actions and tracking systems. So I think we, again, pared down this scope of work. It entails a history component, going through and understanding the plans that we currently have in place, and also what we're working on through the comprehensive plan. We also added the CARP plan in here. It has the development of the high-level kind of vision mission and vision mission and values piece. I think the core of the work is really going to be on the defined objectives, action steps, and measures of success. So that's really what's going to be the cost driver here, is looking at what operational changes should be made, how we track success in each of the departments. And then we really pared down the socialization aspect. And so since the comprehensive plan has done a really great job of engaging the community, we've really pared this down to, once a document is in place, kind of just generally socializing it, but not necessarily having a survey kind of workshop setting with members of the public. So it really meant more to be an internal document for you all as a select board and also for our management team to make decisions on a day-to-day basis and track success. So I would love to hear your feedback on this and answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I'd like to start off by saying that, oh, this is an internal document? I had to read sort of half or two before I decided what it was about. I mean, I just think we need to be, you know, upfront with it. And, and what I, what I understand is that we're, we're looking to create a work plan, I mean, based on the so-called SMART principles. I think that idea, but it's, it's helpful because it's, it's, you know, the ways in which you get from a goal, an abstract goal to actually implementing that goal. And I think that that's an important thing, is just to have upfront, so we know what this is all about. The other, the other comment that I think is critically important to include in here, even though it's an internal document, is the fact that the context is not just, you know, Brookline's population by racial, ethnic, but it's the renter percentage. I mean, that, that is such an important aspect of Brookline that we can't do any type of planning without taking into consideration.
And I do want, so we can definitely add in that feedback, and it's really helpful. I do kind of want to, it's more of an internal guiding document, but I think it's going to be important that, you know, if we decide to go down this route, that it's a transparent document as well. So folks have an understanding of what we're doing. And then also, when we come up with that roadmap, that it's clear to folks what path we're going down. You're welcome to come in and have a seat and hang out with us.
I mean, I thought this was going to be part of an RFP.
So we're still kind of determining the best procurement process. It will either be an RFP, but I think we've gotten down the scope enough that we can just go ahead and proceed with three quotes from firms, reaching out to firms directly, reaching out to the Consensus Building Institute, who last facilitated your kind of guiding mission statement. I, I know you all said that you liked working with them last time, so definitely want to reach out to them and a couple of other firms. So I think we might not have to go through the formal RFP route.
Yeah, just to kind of build up what you were saying, and what Tiffany was saying about this not being a purely internal document. It is a public document, but it's a document that we actually use. I think the most salient criticism or feedback that we got last time was this document should not sit on a shelf. It shouldn't be worthless to us. It shouldn't just be a statement of goals and then nothing, and nothing practical in there about how we make it, how we get there. So I think Tiffany's done a great job refocusing this around this model, this strategic public leadership model that focuses not just on what are, you know, goals broadly writ, but how, you know, what are the metrics that we use to measure that? How are the steps that we take to get there? And how do we know if we're being successful? I think one of the other benefits to having a document like this is that when we have priorities laid out, we also know what lies outside of those priorities. I think sometimes we are pulled in many different directions, you know, we pursue, you know, feedback from boards and commissions that are specialized in the field that say, wouldn't it be great if we could do this? But if we can line that up with the board's goals and objectives and say, we understand that that's a priority here, but it's not the select board's priority, either the select board's goals will change or the select board will say, yep, no, we've got, we've got a roadmap that we're sticking to. And in that way, we can focus our energy on where you want us to focus our energy.
So this, the concept, its origin was, we had a conversation, Paul and Chaz and I talked about strategy maps. And the strategy, the purpose of a strategy map is to say, well, okay, here's your strategy, but how do you actually get there? How do you actually produce something? And how do you measure it? And this, what, what has evolved here is not a, a, a typical or by-the-book strategy map approach, but rather something that is adapted, I think, well to, to Brookline, well to municipality. But the origin is very much, okay, we want to get from A to B, what needs to be done to do that? You know, what immediately came to mind for me, because I had stumbled across this, excuse me, about a year ago, is key performance indicators, which, you know, apparently I'm a missvalued, use that as a way of operationalizing their vision, you know, and, and putting into clear terms that there's the vision, and then there's, here's how we get there. And it is reduced to key performance indicators, and then you report back, you know? You know, we, we said by year one, we will have done this, 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 and this, how did we do? And I, I think that's extremely useful. I'd love to see that. It can, I'm sure, excuse me, that it can be overdone. But it's a good place to start, is how would we get to where we want to be if we reduced it to actions to be taken in year one, year two, year three, year four? Okay, I had a question for Tiffany. Can you point to a nearby community that uses this strategic?
So I actually, this model comes from the UNC School of Government, University of North Carolina, a top school government business, and that's where I got my masters from. So I don't, I think, I don't know that I can appoint to a community that doesn't take the traditional lead with the strategy and then follow up with kind of the KPIs aspect that you were mentioning. This kind of flips that a little bit. I don't know that I can appoint to another community in Massachusetts, but I don't know them well enough. I think there's a lot of the traditional kind of strategic plans.
I would agree with you. So just to jump in, I would agree with Tiffany. Typically, what you see in Massachusetts is you see sort of a larger effort that is, you know, a much more expensive, longer-term project that looks more like a comprehensive plan. And I think, I think what, I think we're trying to, I think with this model, we're trying to meet sort of what the goal, what the board wants to see out of this, you know, what they would find useful and what we would find most useful as well. So it is, it is a little bit different, I think, a strategy that other communities use. But we're also trying to minimize the costs, minimize the time spent on it, make it very useful, make it more practical. And I think it's, it's going to be different in that sense.
Yeah, I can, my overall sense is we, we have planning overload. We've got a comprehensive plan, we've got the revenues and expense override study committee that's coming, we've got the climate action resiliency plan, there's an active open space plan that's taking place. And I think there's probably a number of other studies that are in flight. And I, I can just tell you that if I'm having a hard time rocking how these things fit together and how to make this particular effort very, very practical for the board, knowing that the board changes every year. And I know that, you know, Chaz, we talked, it would be great for you to have kind of a touchstone from board to board to be able to guide. Because that's a problem, because otherwise you're getting whiplash. And the question is, what, what are the critical components of that touchstone to allow you to be able to do the midterm planning that you need to do to be effective without overcommitting the board to doing something that politically might change from year to year?
And that's where I think that if you look on page two, right, that, that core area there of defining objective, active steps, active steps and measures of success, that's really the heart of this, which is that provides that touchstone. Then all it talks about, you know, it says here, appropriate measures of success for each objective, which can be easily tracked and displayed transparently on the town website, those are the KPI. Being able to have that as a reference point and be able to say at the end of any given fiscal year or even during the fiscal year, here's where we are. Here's, here's the progress we're making towards the goals you set. And I think it is, it can be difficult at times to think through what's, you know, what is What's, you know, what is a midterm strategy that isn't necessarily going to be subject to the winds of political pressure?
Right.
Um but it's possible, it's doable.
But that's really, but that is okay, man. So but that's really your objective, right? That that each year we sit down in the summer and we at least give you. We're.
Okay. We at least.
That's a step out for a moment to do a work.
We at least give you from year, our goals and objectives and planning upsets. And now we've got this longer-term fifteen-year plan, which is the comprehensive plan, which isn't going to get to the level of detail that you need.
Right.
And you're just looking for something that can be mid, right, that spans board to board.
Yes.
So that you can have some continuity of planning, so you're not getting kind of whiplash, right?
And that's, and it's not just me, it's department.
Departments, I'm not saying it, but I I say staff.
Yes.
Because staff is trying to execute the will of the board and the will of the board changes. Wait, you know, pretty often, right, each year or so.
But I also think one of the strengths, so.
Sometimes.
Yeah, I think one of the strengths of the board as an as an institution has been that your practice has been towards. Collegiality and institutionalism. Uh you're not.
Well, you've been here.
Well, yes. I don't, I know that. But even then, I think there's, you know, I I think even when there are times when that isn't true, when there are real divisions on it, there's still ultimately this. It's, you're trying to be a consensus building body. The whole point of a select board as an executive is that you're trying to get like a consensus, like that's what this is all about. Um and I think being able to find that at any given point and give staff that mid-range guidance gives us then. More freedom. And you know, you say you're putting out guidelines, maybe guidelines are constraining in some way, but I actually think it frees us up and say, okay. I feel confident that I can come to the board with a multi-year project.
Right.
And I'm not going to have this sort of whiplash, that the board is going to look at this and say. Even if our priorities have changed somewhat, unless there's a real political sea change, we're going to be reluctant to move away from a multi-year project that we committed to earlier. Um because it fits in with these strategic goals and objectives. So things like what you're about to hear, you know, this multi-year chip plan and and the, you know, the action items from that. Um are born out of the fact that we're confident, this is an area where we have confidence that this is squarely the end what the board wants us to do.
And 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 our goals and objectives, which change to some degree every year, but still are sort of like a a um. A continuation of, you know, board goals and objectives over many, many years.
Yeah.
So.
And so, yes, it's it's that next level of abstraction almost.
Yeah, there's no sharp break, there's no cliff.
Yeah.
But they should, but they should focus, I would encourage that we focus on the things that require. Really investment, right? So you can't have staff flipping back and forth, because you're going to be able, people need to be able to feel confident if they come and work in Brooklyn and stay. Right? Um you know, also with respect to investments in infrastructure, our C I P is very dependent. Right, the priorities and longer-term planning for the board. Um things like that. So I I think if we do this, that sounds like we're going to do, that's really what we should focus, those midterm investment areas. So you have an idea of what to do.
Yeah, that's very helpful. And I think the C I P is actually a critical one. It's one of the few areas of the budget that is. Not, you know, not year, right? It's it's a much more long-range plan. You're devoting money into resources that we might not spend for years. Um and then you hear questions sometimes attack me, did we really have, yes, you did, you were borrowing this money?
All right, so. Um for how long are we anticipating that we will engage the facility? I mean, is this a person who's going to be engaged forever? I mean, to come back and come back and come back and come back?
No, I think, I think this initial engagement would be um a set number of meetings over the course of the next year with the select board and upper management. Um and then, you know, if we do think we need a facilitation session, I think that would be kind of. Coming back to that facilitator and saying, we need some some consensus building or revisiting this. But I think the goal is to add more of a document set in stone for that longer time. Horizon.
Mm-hmm.
Um so I I I guess the answer is it could be, but I think the goal here is really for a defined period of time.
And and do we have money in the budget for this right now?
We do. Um it's, you know, it's tight, you know, we're spending, but it's, we're talking about next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Some money into the select board budget for the next fiscal year. Um I'm interested, the other, to add on to Tiffany's point, when you look at the kind of Gantt chart of planning that we have going on right now, everything that's happening in parallel. This actually fits nicely because if the comp plan is going to be finishing in December or around the end of this calendar year, even if it gets pushed a little bit. If expenditures and revenues is publishing its report by the end of this year before the forecast, then what we're doing is we're actually building both. The F Y twenty-seven budget, um any possible ask from the community, if there's an ask for an override. And this sort of long, the mid-range planning process should be being finalized through that air, through that period so that. The community has confidence that whatever the outcomes are from the expenditures and revenue study committee, they're being carried through. By the board doing mid-range planning and demonstrating that we're going to follow, you know, this is what we're we're committed to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And if I may, one last question. So. Um it it, earlier I asked, are there any communities you can point to? This is sort of a variation of that question. Are we confident that there are consultants out there in this area, in this region that can do?
Yes, I've already reached out to several.
Yeah.
I've already reached out to several to have.
Okay.
Conversations. Um and I've spoken with the consensus building institute as well, who. Um you was at last time, they're one of the firms I reached out to, we'll we'll talk to several more, um but confident that we can get it first, we're seeking to get here. Well, it's not necessarily a broader thing done in Massachusetts. A lot of these firms also work in other states and some other states are looking at this kind of model more closely too. So I'm confident that we can achieve that.
Good. Okay, why don't we take a seventh inning stretch?
Okay.
And what will we start on the next?
Yeah, and what we'll do on this is we'll take this feedback, we'll bring it back to you. Hopefully next week, if there are more questions or follow-up, please let us know. Um if it's ready to go, hopefully there won't be much more discussion. We can vote to move through the, whatever the procurement process is.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Ah, that's a great issue, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, we're back. This is a select board meeting for March eighteen, two thousand and twenty five, and we are at the Community Health Improvement Plan, that presentation and discussion by the Health Department. So.
The buzzword for today's plan, did it have a plan?
Or plans, plural.
That's our last, oh, there we go, okay. Um, well, guess we're dive right in, because I know the thing standing between you and lunch is us. The picture we have, we have so very gesture of the public company Human Services Department here with John.
John Kusinski, Assistant Health Director for Boston Building.
Um, so just a quick run of show, we're going to provide some background of the process we had through, really dive into the priority areas in the plan, and then a short wrap up at the end. But feel free to chime in with questions at any point during the presentation. So the Brooklyn Community Health Assessment and Community Health Improvement Plan is our community different plan. And the goal is to evaluate and enhance the overall health and well being of Brooklyn residents, identify key social, economic, and health related challenges. And prioritize health equity and community engagement to shape this five year strategic plan. The initiative was two year process funded through ARPA and conducted in collaboration with Health Resources and Action. And I hear you're in a previous discussion, I would like to employ these consultants forever because they were fantastic, but at some point you have to end the relationship. The findings were drawn from national, state, local survey, focus groups, interviews, leading to the development of the Community Health Improvement Plan, which we're here today to discuss. Not only has this process really developed a complete plan, it has strengthened our community partnerships, which are essential to the binding achievement of our goals identified. The plan has also been shared with our colleagues in planning, we just spoke to this morning, and has formed a comprehensive plan. And we've also shared it with the Sustainability Department to inform the climate action and residents, we're really looking for that synergy. Um, the Community Health Improvement Plan keeps us all moving in the same direction towards the same, uh, community identified goals.
Uh, so before we get into the kind of the nuts and bolts of the plan, we just wanted to round this conversation with some definitions about some of the process work that we did and some of the themes. So first off is what's a community health assessment? The assessment is pretty self explanatory, but for us, we really use the structured process, we partner with H R A who does this work for a lot of communities across the country, really. And it was to understand the health status, the needs and strengths of the Brooklyn community. Goal the assessments to gather comprehensive data on health outcomes, social determinants of health and community perceptions to create a clear picture of the factors that are influencing healthcare in Brooklyn. Uh, the assessment combined quantitative data, we did a survey, uh, we partnered with the, the state on that, we also had other health statistics, national health statistics that were collected of Brooklyn residents that we could, uh, could use as part of our assessment, economic indicators. As I said, social determines health, and then we also had some qualitative insights. So we did some focus groups, uh, some key informative interviews with members of the community. And we use this mixed methods approach to ensure that we're capturing both differences across time in Brooklyn and among sub populations, we understand who our vulnerable populations are. But we also wanted to color that picture with the lived experience of Brooklyn residents. So the assessment allows us to identify the gaps in services here in town, uncover emerging health concerns, and understand which populations are most vulnerable. And this information directly informs those priorities and strategies, which we're going to talk about today in the improvement plan, ensuring that we have a data driven plan, it's targeted, and it's responsive to the needs of the community. And that takes us to our community health improvement plan, so that, um, started right after we finished the assessment. It's another strategic action oriented plan designed to improve the health and well being of residents here in Brooklyn over the next five years. Uh, it builds on the findings from our assessment using that data that I talked about. Uh, we worked in a group of about forty residents and community, um, organizations to identify our key priorities and then establish a coordinated strategy to address them. And this is particularly important coming out of the pandemic. Where we were so focused on that, it was a great, this was a great opportunity to reset and really think about what we're going to do over the next five years. The improvement plan has four priority areas, they're identified through that data collection, that community engagement and analysis. And each of those priority areas has specific goals, measurable objectives, and then we have targeted strategies aimed at improving those health outcomes. Uh, the improvement plan is not a static document, you'll hear I'll say this a few times today, it's a living plan, we will be updating it, we'll be adjusting it based on feedback and our ongoing evaluation that we'll be conducting. Uh, but it really creates an opportunity for partnership, ensuring the town departments, a lot of community organizations and residents are working together toward these shared goals. Thought it was important to just round this conversation and define what we mean by social determinants of health. So this is really a central focus of the improvement plan. Uh, addressing social determinants of health, these are the conditions where people live, work, play, and age that influence their overall health outcomes. Uh, factors include things like access to housing, transportation, education, economic opportunity. In Brooklyn, we see how social determinants disproportionately affect certain vulnerable populations. And the strategies that we use, that we suggest or recommend in the improvement plan aim to address these disparities directly, ensuring every resident, regardless of background, has opportunity to achieve optimal health.
So here we see our project timeline, and it shows the phases of the process that John just outlined. Um, and you can see along the time running different events where we gathered feedback from community partners. Um, phase one started in two thousand and twenty three, which included producing the community health assessment. And it ended with the final community health assessment report. During, then we took the key findings and pulled it into a presentation. Uh, where we looked at, like I said, the key findings, uh, visual data representation and top issues impacting Brooklyn to inform a community improvement plan, just very up to date. Then we engage with stakeholders through interactive planning sessions to determine the priorities and strategies, including several workshops held at the teen center with community partners. And community members to compile again these goals, objectives, and strategies, which we're really going to dive into today. And lastly, in phase three, we continue the collaborative effort to develop a monitoring and evaluation plan to ensure the Community Health Improvement Plan implementation remains on track, effective, and helps ensure progress and impact over time.
So if I could, you invited questions in the, in the middle of this, and so you, I think you were here when we were discussing, um, the looking forward to roadmap for, for twenty thirty, we talked about how important it was to say, well, okay, here's where we want to get to. Here's what we're actually going to do to get there. Presumably, that monitoring and evaluation does, you know, is a, is a check on, okay, how are we, how are we progressing and getting to where we want to be? Um, you want, can you talk a little bit about the, it's a little tiny thing on that slide, but I think that's in some ways, that's the most important part of the whole.
Yeah, that's going to look a lot at our data in understanding what baseline data we have and what we need to collect. I think when we start talking about the actual plan, you'll see there are a lot of metrics and timelines and responsible parties in there that would have been better.
Okay, good.
Can I have one thing for that? It's okay. So, you know, if you go back a slide. This one. This is actually an excellent framework for what, uh, first of all, a comprehensive plan is doing, looking at a lot of these components, not structured exactly this way, but for us, for a a strategic plan, a roadmap, jazz. Um, many of these are the things that, you know, we potentially could be talking about, right? Um, because at the center of the work that we do should be the health and wellness and caring for our community, which we represent. This is, I think this is an excellent framework.
Thank you. From Mr. Tanner, don't forget your question by the end, once we dive into them, let's move into that, go over the monitoring evaluation plan today. So I don't expect you to read this, but just, um, this is a list of community partners and organizations that contributed during the phases, so just to show how extensive it was. And you can actually find the names of individual participants in the appendices in the report. And then here's some great photos of us at the teen center where we met over several days to set those goals, objectives, and strategies. So here you see the key themes that emerged from the assessment phase. We determined this by taking considering both secondary data as well as qualitative data. And in terms of qualitative data, we looked at both how often certain topics were mentioned, but also how many different interviews or focus groups it was mentioned in. So basically, if it was mentioned multiple times by different people in completely different conversations, it would elevate in flag to a key theme. You'll see here the major themes with equity as a prop coming theme. And from here, we work with community groups and partners to prioritize down to three or four issues. That's where it resulted with the chip priorities. So this was back in May of twenty four, uh, the risk group of community based organizations and agencies gathered to identify priorities using common criteria or rating tool and a polling process to identify these priority areas shown, um, which would be addressed in the plan. This is really the start of the chip. Like with every community plan, there are a lot of trade off and competing priorities that were discussed during the meeting. We heard many opinions and agreed on compromises. For example, we have a robust conversation about the top issues for older adults. Many of the top issues in the community health assessment that arose for older adults were addressed within these four priorities. So the group decided to focus on the priorities rather than a specific population. Another result of the discussion was actually to include financial security, which you didn't see on the previous slide. Since it was determined to be a root cause of many of the top issues in the assessment. We know low income individuals are more likely to experience chronic illness, heart disease, such as heart disease or diabetes, and future limited access to services such as safe housing and medical care, which again, were top issues in the assessment. So it was a way to capture broader populations, by identifying these priorities. And then.
Um, when you say that racial equity is a cross cutting theme across all priorities, and you've got that a couple of these slides, uh, certainly understand that. Um, I wonder if you can talk a little bit about what that means as a practical matter, is there, um, are you saying that, um, the lack of equity in opportunity, or the lack of equity in, or the, where, you know, where, where is there a a concern here that could, that we can address?
Oh, or let me ask, why is it racial equity as opposed to just separately? Because equity really broader than just racial.
Yeah, and we, we had a lot of those conversations, and one of the topics we had was we pull out equity as a separate priority. And ended up having racial equity as a cross cutting theme as a root cause of many of the inequities that we see. Um, so we, we recently had a conversation with a colleague, thinking about some of the new environment that we're doing politically, how do we continue to do this work around racial equity? And one of the ways we used to always talk here was around social economic status. Um, and we felt like that was almost a step backwards in public health, um, because we know a lot of the inequities that we see around social economic status have its roots in system racism. So we want to make sure we're really focusing on the right priorities and the right strategies. And the reason why we chose a cross cutting theme was to be very conscious of all these strategies and priorities, to make sure we're considering it when we get to the objectives and strategies.
Okay, this is sort of a reminder that this is a there's a societal problem here that you have to, uh, that you have to recognize when you deal with any of these pieces. Okay.
This is starting changes.
So here's just a quick snapshot, we wanted to break down the priority areas by the goals and the objectives, we're going to dive deeply into these, uh, but we want to put them all in one place before we do. So each strategy is designed like, as we said, and I think the last slide says racial equity, that's certainly a core, I think it's fair, Bernard, you said, well, what about equity more generally? I think that's true. And in the report, throughout the report, we talk about equity, we talk about vulnerable populations, under-resourced populations. There, there are a whole number of, uh, vocabulary, the idea here is we're centering health equity at the core of our work, ensuring resources and opportunities are distributed fairly, and that those that are, uh, historically underserved receive the support that they need so that they can be healthy. Uh, the improvement plan is more than just a set of goals, we're going to talk about that today. It's really a comprehensive action plan designed to create meaningful lasting improvement in health and well being for Brooklyn residents.
I am careful asking this question, but he, he go back. So goal one, if you expect the financial security is, uh, everyone in the Brooklyn community will achieve financial well being and economic security needed, just broad. I mean, that, that's, that's kind of, uh, utopian. And it also ironically, um, sort of misses the point that if Brooklyn opens its doors to people who don't have a gun, security, you know, probably Allen, for example, Nathan Xavier. So I'm not sure, you know, how do you read that, that goal?
I, I completely agree with you, Bernard, because also the public housing example, we are always going to have a population that does not have economic security. And that's actually a strength of Brooklyn, that we want to bring in people from all economic strata. So I, I, I would consider rephrasing that. Certainly, it's a goal that we want everybody to be improving at all times. And I understand that's probably the genesis of the, of the point you're trying to make. But by the same token, I don't want to make it look like we're trying to become that, uh, that our utopian vision is to be exclusionary.
Yeah.
Well, and I I was gonna say, um, I was in this priority group and really struggled with what the thrive mean. Um, so I don't think we're, we particularly use that, we didn't want to use prosperity and, you know, a measure of economic because that's also very difficult to describe. And I think we had that exact conversation about housing, we actually want to increase affordable housing. Um, so we don't want to sort of decrease the percentage of the population that would need for helping. Um, or not have a financial security that we're, that we're talking about here. So we did have that sort of intricate discussion about how exactly do we summarize this financial security goal?
When you, when you look over the specific objectives, those are very, I think those are very well put, especially one point four. Uh, uh, that is, uh, we got to no cost or reduced cost childcare. Um, that's something that directly addresses the, um, needs of a low, the low income Brooklyn Housing Authority and Section Eight population, something that's really missing, uh, in town. So setting that kind of objective. You're right, the goal looks kind of like, well, this is utopian, or this is really mean what we say. Uh, but that objective goes directly to the point of what needs to be done.
I, I certainly like one point four, I agree with you, that's very tangible, benefits everybody, especially those who are um, lower on the economic scale.
Right.
But I, I still, uh, bristle a bit at this notion that we don't want to have people at the lower end of the income spectrum. I think we always do, we want to be able to accommodate more people to come in. We want those who are currently in public housing to be able to improve their economic condition, stay within Brooklyn. And then the spots that are opened up, bring in some others. Realistically, there's always going to be, if you look at this globally, there will always be people who are economically struggling, and we want to be a welcoming community that brings them in and helps see them rise.
But I think, you know, to, to Segal's point, right, this is, the, the priority here is not everyone should be at fifty percent AMI or about, like that actually destroys the concept by AMI. Yes, right, it's not, we have an income target for people, and they're going to expect people to meet it. It is, people will achieve financial wellbeing, what does that mean? It means different things for different people. Um, you know, for people who are, you know, and I think that's where the objectives really frame out the goal is. Well being and economic security doesn't mean I make a certain amount of money, it means do I have the food to feed my family, do I have, do I have money left over at the end of the month? Do I have access to childcare, the things that will keep me in this community? It's not necessarily, I need to make at least forty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars. It is, do I have what I need to not just scrape by, but to, you know, be able to participate in the community? That's where I think, well, you know, the, the wordsmith thing that they went through as part of this was, was really to get at this issue that you've raised, David, which is what, what is, what does that actually mean, what does thrive mean? Because you don't want to put a dollar value next to, is someone, is someone okay, is someone well off, is someone you know, where they need to be, um, as opposed to saying, you know, what are, what are the, what are the metrics that we measure when we say that someone is, um, is, is in a, is in a space of economic security? It doesn't necessarily mean I need to make X dollars, it means that my, the needs of my family, whatever they are, are met, and I'm able to save and participate comfortably in the community going forward.
Well, I'd rather articulate it that way than financial wellbeing, I would take the word financial out of it completely, maybe hovering the basic necessities at a minimum, or something to that effect, without financial in there, because I also don't like the idea of measuring someone's worth as a person by their money. And I know that's not the intent behind it, but I just think that some people could read it that way.
And I, I think that what you're really trying to get at is everyone should have the access to resources necessary to, you know, have a stable life, and that, that's not, you know, it has nothing to do with financial, they could be dirt poor, but still have access to food and, and, you know, healthcare, et cetera.
I mean, but, you know, what are the, those are the other three goals, right? I think if you just say the access to, to the things that people need, that's almost too broad, right? That's what the other three goals cover. You know, you can't overlook the fact that money is a part of what makes people in, in, in our society, people have to have access to money in order to have something. So we are not saying, you know, again, we're not the, the people's financial wellbeing is important in, in the community, and I don't know if there's a better way to say it than that. Um, because you have, you can't leave finance out of it.
It sounds too utopian, I guess that's really the and, and that, and utopia means, what, what does, it means nowhere, or something like that.
Like the, the perfect vision, but I don't even see that as the perfect vision. I think we always want to be bringing in other people who are struggling and try to help them out. So I don't even see that as a, as a good goal.
But, but again, look at the, uh, objectives that flow from the goal.
Yeah, the objectives are great. I mean, I, I don't think anyone suggested that, right, and how do you sort of introduce that?
Okay, all right, I, I don't know how you, how you do that without, without the financing. Um, excuse me, under the strategies, um, however, um, one point three point one, identifying and develop and implement a basic income guaranteeing income, uh, viable wage standard program. Leaving out the viable wage part, um, communities, uh, have so experimented with this and done pilots with this, Cambridge, Somerville, I think as well, Chelsea, uh, as well. Every single one of them was using, um, ARPA funds or some equivalent of ARPA funds. Um, and as far as, as far as I know, ARPA funds are no longer an option for us. Um, should that be in there i- if it's only doable under extraordinary circumstances with a, you know, gusher of federal monies to play with temporarily? Um, you know, I, I'm not aware of any communities that figured out how to do this within their budgets. So that
I was asking.
Right, now I'm going to give you the specific example right here, uh, that I think will help the, um, I think Cambridge has actually decided to continue beyond.
With other, one time only, for a while. With other one time only.
And similarly.
And similarly, the Brooklyn Community Foundation is getting ready to hit in this direction.
Yeah.
With funds that it's pulled together.
Yeah.
So, um, it may be a constant scramble to replace those one time funds.
Yeah.
But there are municipalities that are trying, trying to get out.
Thank you. And now may I get Sagal's answer?
Okay, the question for me. So the Brooklyn Community Foundation is the implementer for that strategy.
Yeah.
So it's including that strategy in the overall. Community health improvement plan. So again, it's not, it's not sort of a town to me. They're the, they're the lead agency on that strategy.
Should say, through the, through the Brooklyn Community.
Foundation, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so again, this was just a snapshot. We're going to dive into each of these so we can continue the discussion. Um, as we look at really the actions under each of these objectives, the strategies and actions. Um, but before we dive into that, we have one more.
One more model, one more framework. So this is uh, this is the social ecological model. I love this model. I'm familiar with it because it was in my dissertation, but we're gonna have to go down that road today. So we just wanted to bring this up really quickly before we dive into the the specifics of the improvement plan. Just to note, you know, as we've said, through the the social determinants, health doesn't happen in isolation, right? It's shaped by our environment, where we live, where we work. Uh, and this model helps us understand how different layers of influence interact and shape our health outcomes. So I threw this figure in here just to show that the typically a socially ecological model has five, five spheres, some have four or six. Depends on how how much you want to break it up, but it starts at the individual level. With our own kind of individual attitudes, beliefs and behaviors, and then it grows until you get the largest sphere, which is local, state, national policies and systems. And the larger the sphere, the greater for potential health impact if you're implementing a strategy or a policy at a higher level. Um, and I just want to give a couple of quick examples, and I, and I think a lot of what we're going to talk about today are also examples, but um, so if someone doesn't have access to affordable transportation. It's obviously going to be harder for them to get to medical appointments or get to a grocery store and buy healthy food. They don't have housing or if their housing's not affordable, obviously their stress levels are going to increase, which is going to impact mental and physical health. And these are the kinds of systemic issues that we aim to address through the improvement plan. And so I think with that, we can move on to the next slide. And, okay, so now we're going to talk. Details about these four priority areas. So priority area one, financial security. The goal is everyone in the Brooklyn community will achieve financial wellbeing. And the economic security needed to thrive. And I think we should be going. Massively lofty goals, as we've already discussed. Um. So. Before I go into the details here, I just want to know, you're, we're going to be talking about year one action plan, and those are the detailed steps. For each of the objectives that we're going to be talking about today. Uh, it identifies the implementers, which Sagal already talked about, one specific example. The resources that are necessary, and then establishing a clear timeline for execution. So we're holding everybody accountable. To what's in this plan and actually achieving it. And I think that gets back to Mike's point earlier. So this first area of financial security. Uh, we know economic stability is a foundation for health and wellbeing. If if families are struggling to make ends meet, it creates stress, reduces their ability to move on there anymore. Uh, the first objective that I want to talk about is uh, objective one point one, increasing the number of residents from historically under-resourced populations. Who gain employment in positions with career uh advanced opportunities. So here we have uh three strategies in year one that we're going to implement. The first is strategy one point one point one, expand partnerships with community-based organizations. So here we're going to be working with women's, uh, Women Thriving, the Teen Center, Steps to Success Rotary, among a whole host of community organizations. To hold some community job fairs. We'll be doing outreach to large employers in the area. We'll partner with career centers, other town departments like HR. Uh, and just promote existing resources and webpages, try to help people find uh game forms on it. Yes.
Mike. Uh, don't forget uh the Brooklyn Housing Authority's uh program for uh economic independence that they. They operate as a really important.
Does the, the wording, the objective for one point one, the the portion of the sentence with career advancement opportunities? I wonder about that on two accounts. One. I would think that almost any type of employment potentially has a career advancement opportunity. And then secondly, how would we measure whether a type of employment has a career advancement opportunity or not? So is that superfluous? And does it create, add an added layer of difficulty in being able to assess every offer of employment?
Have to go to the, actually, modern evaluation and see how we're measuring that objective.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, I think it's a good point. If we just, I think. We might just be assuming that every opportunity has career opportunity or has advancement opportunity and then just count it as such, but so it might be superfluous, yeah.
But it also, uh, you know, is implying we do, do something that maybe we're not doing. I think that's still. Uh, that's problematic.
Why is that problematic? That's what the whole plan is about, is to do stuff that won't make you know.
Well, you know, not everyone is in need of a job with career advancement. I mean, for example, um, yeah. Kids on the spectrum, I'm thinking about since I have a kid. Um, who who just need a job, right? As opposed to a job that they're going to become manager of a store in the head.
And similarly to that, also, uh, many seniors who go back working because they have to, they're not necessarily looking to advance. They just want to have an income coming in. And then just from the measurable side of it, I think it's easier if you just track employment period.
But but look at the percentage, it's not talking about everybody having, right? It's an increase, but an opportunity by ten percent. And what that re- references, going back to that. Brooklyn Housing Authority's objectives are in their program is to get people. Uh, high, get people to the point where they have uh the necessary credential, high school equivalency. Uh, in order to, or some, you know, some uh, some ability to get the next step up. And it's a relatively small objective, ten percent.
Paul.
And I I would just say too that, um, I. Maybe it's uh, it's just the wording, but I do think. Uh, if you have an objective to help people. Identify opportunities for employment that have career and opportunities to grow. That's, you know, that, so when you're, let's say it's youth, right? Are you going to go find day laborers? They're going to be following around Sheet Rock? Right? Or are you going to try to place them with, you know, uh, uh, HVAC company where they can actually learn a skill and potentially get in the union? There's a big, employment is just checking a number.
Yeah.
Right? Career advancement is helping them grow over time and 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 continue to grow their employment. So I'm fine with the way it's it's worded. Unless you want to tweak it just a little bit, but.
And I'm reminded, if I may, uh, to the, was it Steps to Success student that came in this past summer and was interning in our office? So I mean, that was. They were being really intentional in saying, we're not just going to get them any internship, like a laboring job for the summer. We're going to give them a job in the health department. Cause they want to work in the healthcare industry, worked with Sagal and I on some policy work. So it was really an intentional effort to give them something that was.
Yeah.
More than just a a summer job.
Good. I think maybe we could pursue both. I I'm not sure why we would denigrate any type of employment.
Yeah.
And similarly, even in the day labor example, if you get really good at it and you learn the trade, maybe you are going to manage your own. Day labor business at some point, so. I I get a little nervous when we try to, um. Push everybody in a certain direction. I think we can be on purpose and do both. And I understand your point, Mike, about. Making sure that uh people graduate high school or have a GED, and that opens up opportunities. So maybe spell that out. Those are important goals in themselves.
But that belongs over here in the strategy side, yeah.
Okay, is is this the kind of feedback you want?
I I I think they're, you know, I think these are important issues, so. I certainly, I I think it's, I think it's valuable, but I also think you have to realize, right? This is the end of a process, a long, community-driven process. So what you're seeing here is the. Is the expression of the communities, what the community felt was important. Um, and you know, that's why at the beginning we went through this long. Description of how over many years we've tried to really build this out. So I think it is important to flag these things and see, you know, where they, you know, what the limits of this are. But I also think it's important to realize that. These have been workshops in a way that it, I think, sort of. In in a very elegant way. Even if it's not directly addressing this concern, is still speaking to a broad, to a broader thing, right? A community priority is. In general, we want people to be in, in gainfully employed in places that give them the opportunity for advancement. Because that contributes to financial security and stability. There will inevitably be. People who don't do that, either because they can't or because that's not the path they want to take. But that's why it's not, the objective is not put everybody in that spot. It is increase the population. Because there are people out there for which there is an unmet need identified. We know that there are people in the community that want to be doing this. That can do it, that can't do it right now. And so the objective is to increase that people. It's not to denigrate people who are. Otherwise working in a, you know, in a contract employment or who can't work because they have a physical or mental limitation of some kind. Um, it's about.
Or for whom, that's not the next step.
Right.
And so I'm coming off, for example. You know, the next step is not career, it's the job.
Well, uh, I mean, I don't, I'm I'm not a drug counselor, but I don't know if that's true. Um, you know, um, so. I I think that's, that, you know. It's important for us to, the conversation is important to identify the, to make them, to make these flags, but I do think it's important to. Realize where this is coming from, which is the culmination of a community-related process that produced these, you know, workshop. Goals and objectives.
But I I do not try and to cast any aspersions, but if we're not. Allowed to offer our suggested tweaks, then what's the point of ever reviewing? These proposals as a board if we're supposed to rubber stamp whatever is being presented to us?
Oh, it's not about rubber stamping. It's not, it's not about offering critique or feedback. It's it's more.
Information.
It's it's, it was not just informational, because we, the boards, the board. Ultimately sets the priorities, right? This is where the community is saying, this is where. We are, this is, and we're trying to say to you, this is the process that we follow. We do need your feedback and buy-in in this, so it is important to raise those issues. I'm not saying, don't. I'm just saying, think, think about this in the broader context so that. If we, as we move to implement this, what isn't there that the board is concerned about? So this is helpful feedback in that case, but also, you know. It's not, maybe it's not necessarily tweak the document. It's think about where the contours of the document are and what we're missing so that if we need to.
Alright, so in terms of what isn't there, I would agree with Bernard that. Any type of employment is a step in the right direction, and that should probably be in there too.
The other thing, uh, coming back to a previous discussion. Who is a community that's coming up with these ideas? I mean, it's limited, right? And and, you know, I think we have to factor that fact in. Not that, you know, their input is, is um, unimportant. But that may not be as as broad as as. The the, as needed. But I think, I mean, for example, you know, at the high school, everyone goes to Harvard, right? That's the goal. Of graduating from Brooklyn High School or some, you know, some certain place. And, you know, we 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 don't think about kids who really. Would be much better off, much happier, doing something other than, you know, an academic career.
But this leads to that population.
I'm not sure it does, but. Oh, yeah.
It seems to me, looking at the, uh, both the objectives and the the strategies, that it addresses the, sort of the. If you will, with people who aren't going to Harvard, the the.
I just, that was just an example. I mean, I didn't intend that.
No, no, I don't know. I I I I use it in a shorthand, but I appreciate that. And so am I. And it 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 addresses the, um. Wh- uh, early on, there was a slide when, uh, um, in the previous presentation, there was a slide that talked about. How, uh, twenty percent of the population turns over, that a substantial part of that population. Uh, that moves in has an income under eighty thousand dollars, or under, you know, some, you know, then, and there was an in- an income breakdown. People move into Brooklyn without having, uh, the kind of, uh, uh, income that even approaches that, uh, AMO. But and it's this, this is addressing that whole population.
Got a.
Yeah, just briefly, so I'm, I'm, I'm inserting myself in their shoes for a moment, in their seats, uh, and I'm thinking, complan, a year from now. Is the board going to wordsmith, uh, the goals and objectives and the strategies? Maybe you will, but I think we did today, you should. Well, I think we should. I'm just, I I'm afraid right now that there's a disconnect between their expectations. And our expectations, and I'm not sure what we should be doing. So is this the type of feedback you want? Are you looking for us to help you wordsmith the goals and objectives and scratch? I I understand, we're getting, we're getting very, and I'm not having a problem with it. I'm just saying we're getting very specific in terminology. And I'm just asking, I I understand that this is, this is the culmination of the end of the process. Um, if if we provide you with this feedback. Are you going to come back with a revised presentation that takes this feedback into account? That's my, that's what I'm asking.
I think it, it, we want to look back a little bit. Throughout this whole process, this two-year process, we've taken very broad, big things and completely prioritized at every meeting down to these really narrow. Strategies and then under these strategies, we're verbally kind of going over our actions, like through the steps we're taking to do it. So the whole, a lot of these discussions have been held at these meetings and really sort of narrowed down to this really narrow, specific. Strategies and action. So I think this is year one. As we could sort of talk about this living document, these things will change and respond to the environments around it. So I think this general feedback is good. And it will adapt. Are we going to come back and do another presentation with revised strategies? Probably no, but as we look to implement year two, three. We're going to have, it's one of my final slides, but we're going to have a steering committee. And specific working groups under each of these priorities. And so that continued input and massaging of the plan is going to happen. It's a living document. So I think hearing that stuff now is helpful as we continue to adapt. This changeable document. I mean, it is changeable and living. It's going to, you can't have a plan that isn't adaptive.
Can I have one follow up? Hand control back over to Mr. Sam. Um, so again, this is where it's helpful to understand expectations coming in, because I do, I do think, and again, I respect my colleagues and their feedback. I. I understand what they're saying. Now, there are some things in here that perhaps the the select fourth from a policy perspective would not want to support. Right? And I think that's, I think that's what you're hearing. Again, I'm trying to help solve the gap here. Um. So I do think that, that it would be very helpful to have the feedback. And then come back with, uh, if there are significant changes in either the objectives or the strategies, that that be incorporated, because it's the will of the executive board. To do that.
Can I, can I just respond back to that? You got an important point. Um. We're taking some big swings. And we're, we're jumping into areas that public health doesn't, local health departments don't generally get involved in. But I think it's important to recognize that not all of this plan is being implemented by the municipal side of the government. So the, the plan is a municipal plan. But there are a lot of community organizations that are taking on specific aspects of this. That the executive branch doesn't directly have control over it. I'm not challenging your authority, right? But I just want to recognize that. In what it comes to financial and housing, like some of these are not things the health department's going to be. Doing actively doing. It's going to be some of our community partners.
And the guaranteed basic income was a great example. We've been very minimal, you know, we're. In the group, we're in there, we're talking in a conversation, you're not the implementers of that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think this goes beyond wordsmithing. As Paul suggested, there are certain policy implications. From how the objectives are defined. And I like the strategies. I don't really have any qualms about how, about the strategies. But I do think the way that we word the objectives. Do create a certain undertone about the policies that we want to, and objectives in a broad sense, that we want to pursue as a town. And I worry that some of these, at least to me, and I think to Bernard, sound a bit elitist. And uh, I don't think that's the intention at all. I don't. I'm not questioning the motives. But the way it's worded to me sounds like we don't want to have. People who are at the lower end of the income spectrum. We want everybody to be funneled into positions that career advancement. And while those are worthy goals, I don't think those are the be all, end all. And I don't want to come across as Brooklyn being an elitist town that's trying to push out certain types of people.
Huh, yeah, I mean, that's just the opposite of the mission of public health.
Yeah, right. Will not be responsive to certain people.
So, um, I I I want to take a step sort of back a little. Context. A little bit earlier on, uh, we were talking about, um. Looking at a roadmap for twenty thirty, and one of the things I saw, I talked about was. We started, I think it's fair to say, at least with the conversations that Paul and I had. Sort of, uh, um, were about studying with the, the concept of a strategy map, which is. You define where you want to go, and then you define all of the things that you need to do to get there, starting from the very basic, most basic levels. What resources do you need? How do you, you know, how do you operationalize using those resources? That is very much the tenor of the the direction that this is going. So I think this is, you know, whatever. Raving we may do about wordsmithing, this is a wonderful piece of work. And I think we recognize the effort that's gone into it, the thought that's gone into it, and the. Good sense that's gone into saying, okay, we want to get somewhere. How do we get there in very specific terms?
Well, being a staff.
So I, I just want to make sure that we get that across.
Yeah.
To, to the, 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 to the health department, because this is, this is what they've been working on and they've done a hell of a good job of it.
And you're, well, yes, thanks.
And you're, well, yes, thanks. Um, so, you know, um, I think maybe what, what we really is one of these cross-cutting, you know, bars, uh, on each of the slides saying, uh, cross-cutting for all priority areas, being able to afford this, you know? I mean, because we're, we're looking at a broadened sense of what is the, uh, mission and the future potential of our Department of Public Health to do more than inspect restaurants, to make sure everything is sanitary, uh, you know, set up inoculation clinics. You know, it's this much more broadly defined public health mission. Um, if, if we were to say yes to this tonight, which I, you know, I assume we do, I don't think, even though if we're gonna take a vote on it. Um, but it's commendable. I think all of us like it. Um, six months from now, when you come to us, as I expect you would, and say, remember how you said you really liked this plan? Well, it's gonna require we add three people here and furthermore, some monies for acquire Z, we might say no. Um, and I just want that to be clear. I mean, because if, if we don't have the money to do this stuff, we're not gonna be able to say yes to it. But on the other hand, I think it's commendable that, that there has been a more broadly defined mission, you know, for our public health departments.
Um.
And by the, definitely just quickly said. Of course, this is also part of the process. So actually defining what is the name of your department? Because, yeah, originally it was Health and Human Services and then Lloyd Gellino, you know, left his position, whatever it was called. And it, on some parts, on the website, it was Health Department, some parts of, you know, website of Health and Human Services and other names. So, you know, this is sort of trying to give, give the department an identity based on a broader, uh, scope responsibility.
If I could address John's point.
Sure.
Um, I just want to add, cause with, with this John mentioned, was talking about how it's community plan. Um, a lot of the, uh, cause we did look at exactly capacity and resources needed for each one of these strategies and actions.
Yeah.
Um, and it's not all, all of the town. And that's what I think is really good about this plan. I talked at the beginning, getting the buy-in and participation from those community groups on this new strategy because they are the executors in some of the money support behind us.
Yeah.
And we were very careful for things around policy to say they will be groups advocating for. Um, to understand that necessarily that will not particularly be town staff advocating for that, that will be outside groups that were involved in this process that will be advocating for that policy.
Well.
Yeah. So, uh, thank you, Scott. And I want to echo what Mike said. This is an outstanding piece of work. And I may not agree with all the words, but it, it's, it's an outstanding piece of work and, um, we should do more of this, you know, across the board. Um, I think the piece that you just mentioned is missing to connect for perhaps some of us is what does it mean to us as a board? What do, do we need to fund this? Are we going to use a partner? What support are you going to be coming to us in the future for this plan? Um, you know, guaranteed minimum income, you're saying that would be done through a partner. That would be important to know as part of this plan. So another crank on this, hate to create more work, but would be almost a responsible, a matrix that you have it, okay?
We, we went back and forth with it and giving this, this is really the living, this one's gonna change and adapt. So we can share this with you. This is what we're gonna go through verbally. We were gonna take two objectives under each priority area and walk you through it. And then open up a conversation under each priority area. That was a plan, but I love this conversation that we're having. This is, I'm kind of picking ourselves. This is the hardest one, to be honest, because the other three were like, I talked to the meeting really concrete from the assessment. This came out of that conversation when we had forty people. It was actually, anyone who ever tell how long you changed it. Um, and we had these forty participants and community groups and we ended up coming with, up with financial securities and additional priority because it was the root cause of many of the things we were looking at. So how do we work on people's finances? So it helps with housing. So it helps with access to care. So it helps with, you know, seniors and older adults. So we kept going back to finances and that's why this ended up being a priority in the plan. But I think to your point of who's exactly responsible, what are the resources, what do we need to implement it? And I think when we look at the human access to human and social services, you'll hear a lot of things that you've already heard from me in the budget presentation. The Human Services Navigator, um, the online system to pay for that. And that's actually, throughout many of these strategies, you'll see that. And that's something that, you know, aligns with the goals and objectives of the board and is already being implemented into the budget for next year. So we have tried to rely on the things that do fall under the department directly. Um, but another example that we're going to talk about is connecting with BHA around, um, health and safety findings. And, and in that is our inspectional staff. So how can we better collaborate between BHA and the department? You know, that again falls heavily in the department. But then there's examples of the department's very limited and then there's, there's no budget that we're gonna come back to you for. Uh, but we're more facilitators and.
There. I just had a similar question to Paul's about, I think it would be helpful to know who would be responsible for what in terms of making it happen. And something I think could be done at the local level would be flow charts on sort of each of the, uh, major areas, just so people know how to navigate through their issue. So if it's about medical access, who do they contact, when and why, under what scenario? Um, if it's something about, uh, economic security, who are, what are your resources, local, state, federal level? What do you do? Where do you go? Um, that can be helpful to people because many times people are lost and they don't really know what to do.
Maybe help them navigate through the system.
Right.
That's why we're calling it navigator.
Yes.
Um, yeah, and, and you'll see that position throughout the action items under the strategies. Um, so this has been really helpful, but I don't, we want to continue down, going into the other priorities and talking about some of those actions because it might be more clear if we get to any actual actions under each strategy.
So, so why don't we go quickly to the others? Cause I, yeah.
Yeah.
So you go ahead and add to the, that, that much discussion.
So if we want to jump to the next, do you want to just go straight to priority two? Cause we can talk about human services or we want to skip that and just talk about it?
Only because you mentioned childcare. Do you want to dive into this one? Sort of. So how, how are we gonna do this? How are we gonna increase capacity? For our childcare.
Yeah. So this is objective one point four, uh, increase the capacity for, uh, no cost or reduced cost childcare, early education and after-school programs. Uh, so for year one, exploring approaches to decreasing, uh, the cost of childcare, we're gonna be working with potential partners like BCF, Trust Early Learners, Steps to Success, and just a few actions that we plan to take in year one into, uh, support emerging initiatives uh, using ARPA funds to create thirty to fifty additional slots for low-income children. Uh, yeah.
Something you've already done. So working with trusted early learners and some of the coordination that they're already doing. So again, it's really making sure we're all dragging towards the same priority and goal. It's not necessarily all new initiatives.
Yeah.
It's that we prioritize these and how can we help facilitate the community to reach these goals. Sorry, John.
No, that's, that's perfect. And, and also working with some other community organizations to explore ways that we can expand scholarships for after-school programming and create a centralized directory of childcare options that will be used by our Human Services Navigator for those, uh, families that come in and are looking for childcare options. They'll have that resource ready for them to, to provide to residents. Okay, that's it for this meeting.
And then. Why don't we go on?
Okay. Certainly one I feel much more comfortable with because, and you'll see, so for priority period two, access to social and health services. Uh, the goal is high quality, equitable and timely social, social and the health services will be easily accessible to every Brookline community member. So how do we plan to do that? Uh, first key objective is two point two. Uh, increase access to diverse and culturally competent social workers, community navigators and community health workers employed by or partnered with the town. So expanding these roles will help residents feel more supported and improve trust in local services here in town. Our year one strategy, we've already started working on this, as Segal was just talking about, uh, this effort to hire a Human Services Navigator to facilitate comprehensive access to health and social services, ensuring that it will support. So that we've worked on a hiring plan. We've been networking with other communities that have similar roles to understand what that job description should, should look like. We developed that job description, got approval from HR and later this spring we'll be seeking approval, uh, to hire from the board for that position.
Of course, a question that just is, is a hundred pound gorilla in the room is that, uh, you're not gonna get ser, uh, support services and resources from the federal government in many of these areas. So we, so we're also talking about additional, um, marrying other, um, other things to make up for that loss.
We, I kind of described the predicament we've been looking at with that on three fronts. So I mean, you're rapidly at our department, we don't have direct federal funds or much things.
Oh, not thing of the federal funds, but for example, just information.
Um, oh, yeah.
Yeah, CDC information, um, and other things that, that, that we relied, we relied on to anticipate, um, you know, pandemics or whatever.
Yeah. So I think particularly around social and health services, um, I think we well see cuts to some of our partner agencies, which will only make the problem worse in our community. So I've been thinking a lot of these strategies and this is sort of living down, making it more adaptable. Um, and then same thing for the state, you know, as we can test the state, how would that kind of affect other resources? Um, and then the misinformation that you were just talking about, which is gonna be a constant challenge for us, making sure we're putting out the right information.
And, and require additional hiring. So that's, I guess that's the point I'm making. Yeah.
But I also think some of these goals are macro level and long-term that are going to certainly outlive any one particular federal administration. And so I think it's still.
Yeah.
So I think it's still important to not get too focused on specific challenges for this particular year and next year and think about this as what's the roadmap for the next twenty?
Right.
Um, one thing I think would help a great deal and, uh, and to some extent would respond to John's concern about, well, where does money come from? Um, is that you've mentioned a couple of partner, uh, partners, it will be maybe under the strategies reference, uh, who the partners are for implementing this because that's an explanation, explanation, not just to us, but it is to the community at large, uh, and, um, uh, uh, it, it just seems to me like that would, um, help at least to some extent alleviate the concern about where do we get the resources?
I, I can stop sharing the slides and pull up the action plan. Just, you can see a snapshot of what that looks like.
Right. Well, you, you, uh, you, you can, it, it, what I'm, what I'm suggesting to you is this is, this is a really interesting and very, very useful document. Um, to the extent that you can add that little bit to it, I think it will become that much more.
I mean, is it helpful if I stress this around right now? So while we're talking?
Just one.
Yeah.
Well, it's, I hate to take offense, but as you can see, I already slipped through it a lot.
Yeah, because the, the action plan, it, it's literally, I mean, you'll see it. It has the goal at the top, it has each specific objective and then it's really goes point by point how we're gonna get through it.
Right. Your question is how you, uh, how you explain what you're doing, you would claim what you're doing to us with this presentation. Um, and, uh, and if you're going to explain to the community at large, the same question is going to arise. Where is the, you know, where, where do the resources come?
Yeah, Paul.
Yeah, so, so first, I, I had no doubt that you had that over with me too. I mean, I can tell that you got a tremendous amount of react here. I do have one question about how the goals were set. So twenty twenty eight was not very far away. Um, and you're gonna increase, uh, access to health services, to trips, transportation by twenty percent. I know we started from this. I, I think I saw a number maybe to twelve thousand or fifteen thousand trips. Uh, our, our senior, uh, transportation is twelve, fifteen thousand per year. I think right now is the run rate. It might be higher. Twenty percent is a significant increase. Um, I know that CDBG money is helping to support, uh, the trips program. That's like, what potentially are gonna be cut. Um, you know, and some of our other, so I'm just curious about the goals, jumping to the next slide. Uh, you know, and I don't mean to, but I just want to talk about goals. Uh, increase the percentage of deed restricted affordable housing by five percent by twenty twenty nine. You know, the housing production plan has identified a whole number of barriers. Uh, five percent is a significant increase in four years for deed restricted housing. It's almost, I don't think that's even an achievable goal. So how did you, how did you set your goals and did you test feasibility with any, any other agencies? Um, that, that, that are responsible for this.
Yeah, the, the goals were set during those sessions of the teen center with community work groups. Um, it was something we struggled and discussed a lot and resolved a lot through three rounds of feedback with participants. Um, I think pretty, you know, similar to the goal of the objectives, those general objectives are also very lofty. The, some of the timelines were set because it's a, it's a five-year schedule plan.
Right. Um, so I just want them, so I just want them to be realistic. Right? There's no way in the world we're gonna increase deed restricted affordable housing in Brookline in four years to have five percent. It's just, it's not possible. And even if we, even if we did a bunch of reviews, it, it's just not, uh, it's just not possible to do it. I think similarly decrease by ten percent. I love it. The proportion of housing burden, thirty percent, fifty percent by twenty twenty nine, still is, that's means you're generating a lot of deed restricted housing, um, or you're increasing other programs to supplement it. Um, anyway, I, I get people want to have a measurable lofty goal, but it's gonna be the most entertaining.
Um, and you'll see sort of under, under the first strategy, three, one, four there, um, you know, that with some of the voices in the room, we set it on advocate for.
Yeah.
Um, there's a lot of people that wanted to implement and execute.
Of course.
And we, you know, we said that this needs to be advocated as the action word associated with that strategy. Um, I can dive into housing. We just.
I didn't need to jump ahead. You should stick with the.
Did we want to highlight, uh, we want to talk about access to, I, I do want to quickly mention under this one that the Human Services gap analysis recommendations are integrated into this priority. So we had sort of those two parallel reports going on for a while and then we integrated. So this, this actually was our easiest priority because we have a nice sort of, um, layout of what we should do from the Human Services study. So everything was integrated here. Um, I think we know housing is pressing in Brookline. Um, we talked about a lofty goal here. Um, all neighborhoods, you know, really struggling around that word. How do we make this inclusive of all of Brookline? Who's healthy, well-maintained, accessible, that's physically accessible, um, and stable, how sustainable for everybody? Why don't we dive right into? Um, so I just wanted to point out this one, some of the groups we're gonna work with is a Brookline Community Development before. Um, happy to have you onboard there and the Brookline Community Foundation and resources like Greater Boston Legal Services. Really identifying legal aid for tenants and landlords and how we can be better connect people to first services. Um, and the second strategy, um, we've talked about, I think, um, with, you know, with this blackboard of integrating housing stability into the human services functions. Um, and how can we better connect people to helping resources? Let me blossom the menu, because I want, I want to hear something here this lesson about it. Um, this is the one I mentioned, three point three is really how can we better coordinate, um, responses from the health department and BHA properties around health and safety funding. So evaluating both our process, their maintenance request process, looking at neighborhood communities, how do they do it? How can we improve and how can we get feedback from tenant and tenant associations on the current work we're doing and then any improvements that we propose. So really try and gather that feedback from the occupants about how the system is working.
And so, um, I think tapping into, um, the CPA, so this is all about funding, right? Uh, to be able to address or to correct those, uh, the health and safety issues with them. It's some, some of it does require funding.
For us, better coordination and information sharing.
Okay.
We don't have to pay for the improvements and order them to make them.
Okay, yeah, okay.
But I hear to get the improvements, they'll need funding. And again, thinking about, um, housing as a human service need and how can we work with the navigator to better connect people.
There's something that we talked about, um, you know, the, when we're talking about setting priorities, going back a few, a couple of these meetings. Um, and it, it's the increased ish, interest of the community as far as we can tell. Uh, and this is a pretty good indication that we're right, uh, in an expansion of the social services provided by municipalities at the local level. Part of that is in response to a feeling that there is inadequate support state and federal level. Uh, but part of that is a sense that, well, we should be doing something locally, almost without regard to what's going on at the, uh, uh, other level of government. But there's certainly that. That's a priority that I think we recognized, just as we recognized that there was a great, greater interest in concerns about climate change and concerns about, um, uh, uh, yeah, climate change is probably the most, uh, a rapper that, that, uh, 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 that really can, has come forward in the last ten to fifteen years. And the increased interest and concerns about housing and what can the municipality do? So, um, a lot of this is responsive to something that's broadly going on uh, in the community and, uh, picking Segal, uh, uh, Segal's comment that this came out of discussions with the community. What we're hearing is that change in community priorities and community concerns from the more traditional, well, how are the schools and how are the police and fire departments to let's broaden what we're, uh, what we're concerned about through some of these other things, so these social issues. Uh, and this is a reflection back to us of what we, um, uh, what we've been hearing in, in, in less. in 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 less uh, specific, less detailed form from uh, our own experience in the community.
Yeah, so a question I have about this particular priority, housing affordability, obviously critically important, there are a lot of other boards that are also uh, addressing housing affordability and have their own plans, and I wonder to what extent the objectives and strategies for uh, this particular plan with health and human services aligns with housing advisory board and some of these other groups.
Yeah, and I have some kudos at the end to give to Kara for the amount of time that she helped us, particularly with this priority, um, because we're public health professionals, we're not housing professionals. Um, so, you know, helping us massage these, but also compromises that we made with the community groups and the participants we had in the chip, you know, throughout the process, so there was a lot of back and forth, um, with her team, um, Kara and many of the people in her department, and also, um, we have shared it with them, um, and shared with the half, we were just talking during the transition, we're, um, we're going to do a presentation for them. Again, particularly around this priority, but the whole chip, maybe in the summer and town meeting is over, but to make sure that coordination is happening.
All right, because I I feel a little worried, I'd be a little worried if they have different goals. And obviously, both have the same macro vision and increasing housing affordability, but even some of the specific objectives, if they're different and some of them might be opposite each other in terms of priority and just worry about how that would work, we don't want to be disjointed.
Yeah, I agree with you. And I'm, I'm hoping, um, we've had some conversations that some of her staff will be on this working group. I'm thinking about David Gussman and the work that I heard the planning department does around housing are really integral to this working group and can make sure the work presses, you know, the implementation. We have one more that we'll try to go through briefly, talk about a goal, I don't know how they came up with this one, um, this was, this goal is definitely written by a committee. Um.
The cabinet.
Yes, provide easy access to affordable, preventable and responsive mental and behavioral services for all people that are sustainable and that are representative of all of Brookline, so that all can thrive, and there's that word thrive around, and what does that mean? A lot of this.
That helps me.
Yeah, I like to think about it, accessible, vulnerable and responsible mental health service, so that people can thrive, understand how that could help as part of thriving.
Right.
But I hear you on that goal.
That's important co about. Yeah, um, and and it really lends itself to just identifying resources that are available and making sure that we can help people with seven of the resources.
And and not to beat a dead horse, but I appreciate that in this goal, there's a mention of that are representative of all of Brookline, because I felt that was lacking a bit from the first two.
Okay.
This is a big goal.
Yes, they're all among this, and and I keep emphasizing community plan, community to implement.
Hmm.
Um, so under this first objective, or expand access to mental and health services by adding new community based locations. Um, and increasing access to service points for ensure the residents get care of when and when and where they need it, sort of what, um, Rinaldi just mentioning, better accessible it is and more likely people will seek that service. Um, and steps to implement this include identifying and prioritizing locations for mental health services, working with the Brookline Center, Community Mental Health, to provide services onsite such as the senior center, senior housing, the library, the teen center. Um, so again, Brookline Community Mental Health Center really being the lead on this, and we're going to be facilitating, helping to make those connections with some of these groups.
And I assume you you're including tele mental health.
Oh, yeah.
And you're, you're, this, then necessarily had to have locations, right?
Well, with this, under this specific strategy, and I should say, you'll see in the chip, under each one, there's a whole list of strategies. We're identifying year one strategies that the group has pulled out, says this is what we're going to do first. There are other strategies that we hope to implement year two, three, four, and five, and that's what the working group and steering committee will think, so.
But that's a good point, because telehealth, um, and um, mental health content through uh, through Zoom and uh, is a very easy to implement tool, you have to get the person who needs it to come to the, uh, to 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 seek it certainly, and maybe onsite will help get, you know, create that, but it is very um, easily implementable approach.
Well, and I think some of the conversations here, for who, right, technology is a challenge for some, not for others, technology needs it for others, so having telehealth works for some and it'll fill some gaps, but some people want it to face, they want it where they are, and we're not necessarily always talking about direct counseling either. Um, there's other ways that we'd love to improve mental health and well being and belonging. It's not necessarily all therapy, that's sort of the healthcare part of of mental health care, we're thinking more community based, how can we promote belonging?
Okay. All right, um, we're going to need some therapy if I don't get that much.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody over, we are makeover, um.
It's okay, we we've been distracting you, that's all right.
Um, some things again here came out of the, um, human services gap analysis. Any questions about this one? Because that's it, we just have a couple little next steps, and I can really just gloss over these, um, again, we talked about the working groups and what implementation means. Um, this is a call to the working groups, which I think I'm excited to hear the interest in this and and your feedback, actually, because that means you think it's important. Um, so we are going to be putting together steering committee and a working group, um, so I'll be reaching out again, I'm sure.
It's a kind of a working group method, so C A B has, is utilizing a similar type of approach, where they're using working groups similar to implement and part of the plan, um, there, of course, there's a risk associated with that because it's not systemic, right, you're dependent upon volunteers to get it executed. But portion, what percentage of your plan is dependent upon execution by volunteers?
Um, some of them are volunteers, but some of them is their role, so we think about our partnership with V H A, and we work very closely with them now. So it's more, they're already doing this, but how can we?
So they're a community partner, they're already there, okay.
Um, but there will also be volunteers and sort of, my calls, you know, we want a mix of lived experience and content experts, so we need a mix of both.
Okay.
Um, business owners, someone just passionate about proven health, nonprofit community, um, or any of the topics that we're working on, so any work to go around.
Dude, I looked through the action plan, and that's very helpful, a lot of concrete steps laid out, although even there, it sounded like on the budget card, it's talked to so so and so about identifying funds, at what point of the process would that occur, so that the funding mechanism spilled out of them?
I think depends on year, what we're able to attain, to get that living document, I hate to give you that answer, it depends um, on what strategies are chosen and what is successful and what isn't. Um, that'll constantly be, there's always a capacity issue and prioritizing what needs to be addressed for others, that's a constant struggle we have.
But just for example, if there's a certain, so mental health, if there's certain grants that are available that can, one can apply to, I think maybe flushing that out a little bit at some point in the process would be helpful as opposed to an action item of let's talk to this person about what to do. Because that still leaves it as a very open question, so to the extent that there are some uh, recurring available funding sources, this follows out.
Yeah, and one of the ones I was kind of diving to was, um, and you heard it in my buddy presentation, the strategic prevention framework around substitute prevention. And that is something that we're laying the foundation, so we can apply for some federal grant funding around that.
So you can still exist.
Yeah, our podcast.
Um, I I just want to do a couple things, like I mentioned Kara, but there were many, many department heads that were involved in this process and really want to thank them for their times, on their extremely valuable time, and thank Chad for his support on this plan, and for the ARBA committee and the select board's support by funding it. Um, this has been extremely valuable to me, not only to be able to strategic plan for the department, but like indicated at the beginning, really developing those partnerships across the community, because public health works in this collaborative atmosphere, we can't do it as a department by ourselves. If we want to reverse the systemic changes that public health is looking to achieve, and we need a community to achieve that, so this has been really instrumental to achieve those connections.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ron.
But Tiffany, um, I think if we go out to the, um, in terms of ready moments, okay?
Yes.
Okay, uh, welcome back, this is the uh, uh, regular floor meeting for March eighteenth, two thousand twenty five, um, let's start off with the P P W, uh, Public Right of Way discussion, and who's going to?
I'll kick it off.
Okay.
All right, good afternoon, everyone, I'm Erin Chu, Commissioner of Public Works, and we are here this afternoon to provide you with updates and recommendations about the public right of way. Um. Last year.
Let me just say, so, um, because we got the materials, uh, yesterday, we're going to vote next, uh, next week.
Okay.
Going, but you know, we want, we want to hear.
Absolutely.
And digest over.
All the preparation that you need, we'll provide, provide each man, we have a lot of segments, and some of them I'm going to go through quickly, but they are all available kind of not only in your pocket, but we've put them on our website as well, um, under a, a sort of full page, we'll let you know what we have, but a lot of information we put out there for the public uh, regarding the public right of way. So in twenty twenty four, um, the select board requested that the Department of Public Works evaluate its approach to pavement management, rehabilitation, develop a system that's clear, transparent, and equitable, um, and optimize the town's investment in the public right of way. And in advance of this, um, we had presented to the board, um, to the transportation board, many, we done a condition assessment, we looked at the um, deteriorating conditions, the roadway and shared that given the current model, given the policies and given the investment, that we want that trajectory to continue and decline. Um, recognizing the urgency of these issues, the select board set a strategic goal to improve the conditions of Brookline's roads by ensuring that essential maintenance and asset management are conducted promptly and efficiently, and so today we have a proposal for you, um, our plan in terms of how to move forward. Um, we're proposing to implement a structured, data-driven transportation mobility plan with asset management as its foundation and aligning all of the associated policies. Uh, this approach prioritized projects based on clear metrics, including cost benefit analysis, safety enhancement, user volume, and will significantly streamline the management and maintenance decisions, so today we're going to provide, um, just an update on um, industry best practice and what we are doing in terms of targeting road segments using the greatest cost benefit value. Um, we are going to talk about the condition of the current road, of the, the current condition of the roadway, uh, our program work history and five year C I P, and then policy updates that will prioritize responsible asset management. Um, complete streets and sidewalk work based on funding, capacity, service level, and need, and then prioritization of traffic calming based on data. Uh, just sort of quickly, um, the overall pavement condition, as noted in the memo, has decreased uh, in recent years and construction costs are escalating significantly, um, compounding, um, kind of the urgency of getting the asset under control and do it for, um, with maintenance management of the roads. The public expectations, I think, as we have all heard around bicycle infrastructure, um, and traffic calming are increasing and this data-driven approach couldn't be, um, more important. The goals are to strategically improve our rules and sidewalk conditions, accommodate users of all ages and abilities, implement this data-driven approach, and also establish a unified and cohesive policy framework, which is critical, um, for managing the public right of way. And just sort of to start us off with the road network itself, our current P C I, um, that's a rating that's based on zero to a hundred in terms of the pavement condition index is sixty point one five, in twenty twenty, it was seventy one point six two, we are uh, scheduled to do another um, assessment this summer to see what the P C I is, and um, our plan is based on looking at, um, the P C I, the type of maintenance required and volume. Uh, and we break out the number of miles and the average P C I, we have this, um, for every road in town, it's been assessed, it's been given a numerical uh, value that's available on the website.
Can I, is, are you okay for questions, or do you want to wait till we're done?
I think we should wait until we're done, um, so Conrad, I'll move it over to you.
Yeah, so, uh, nice to meet you all.
Oh, that was my, sorry, so, um, I want to introduce the team, this is a great team, and there are others actually that have been working on, um, the the development of this plan, on the implementation of this plan, Kevin Johnson is our director of highway sanitation and services, my deputy commissioner of operations. Conrad Ledger and Margot Spiller are, uh, our consultant team from Environmental Partners or Apex and, um, have worked with us in developing the theme, the plan, but also rolling out the work and the different type of work, very integral to our team, uh, the plan, but thank you. Amy Engle, transportation administrator, um, Jake Scarpino, you maybe haven't met, is one of our, uh, engineers and manages the roadway um, progress, doing a fantastic job, and Dan Murphy, our director of engineering and transportation.
Thank you, I should have introduced, or I should have introduced them.
Yeah, I haven't, in my life, so excited to.
You got, got into it, excited about your presentation.
Yeah, so with that.
Sure, uh, thanks, uh, for allowing us to come in today, and, um, you know, uh, I've had the opportunity and the pleasure of working with the community since twenty eighteen, so, um, it it's been, uh, a pleasure of working with the community and trying to get this program moving in the right direction and make, uh, real improvements in the community. Um, one of the things that I think, I think the only thing that has been consistent, uh, in the community since I started working there is change. Uh, change in policies, change in people, um, and change in the directive moving forward and and how we will approach things. And let's say, as humans, nobody likes change, um, change is difficult, change is challenging. Um, but one of the things that you get going when you get through some of that initial change is you get momentum. Um, and I think that is going to be some of, uh, what you're going to see here as part of the presentation today, is that the program, what we've put in place with the changes in the policies and some of the directives, um, we are starting to really gain momentum now. Um, and you're kind of see some of that with, um, some of the results that we show here, and then the plan that we're going to present moving forward. So I'm going to break this down into kind of three components and with some of the team taking place, uh, taking part of it. But I'm going to kind of give you the framework of of where things are right now, um, and this is general asset management practices, we look at an inventory and assessment of the overall network. Um, and then we get into, uh, analyzing that information and getting an understanding of what it means and the approach moving forward. And then presenting a plan moving forward or an action plan or an attack to how we're going to move forward with spending some of the resources that the town has allocated to this program, um, so with that, you know, what's up on screen right now is, uh, a kind of a snapshot of the roadway network. Um, and as Commissioner Chu mentioned, we started this program back, I believe the initial assessment circulated in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. Um, and what we did was we did an assessment of all the roadways using the latest technologies, so um, that is an assessment, we basically weighed every segment of roadway from intersection to intersection. Um, and that results in a zero to one hundred rating for each of those segments of roadway, one hundred being a roadway in near perfect condition, just recently paved, and then a zero being a roadway in a really a state of disrepair. Um, on the left-hand side here, you have a breakdown of the mileage, uh, and the repair category that all those segments add up to. So, uh, you can see the total on the bottom, the total center line miles of roadway is ninety nine point five four. So you can see the total on the bottom, the total center line miles of roadway is ninety nine point five four. And then you can see from the bottom to the top is actually the better roadways in the community, the near new communities with defer maintenance. And then we have different categories that fit all of these roadways into based upon the overall weight. So you can see the distribution there. And what this allows us to do is get an understanding of what the cost would be to do the repair or the rehabilitation that's needed on each of those segments of roadway. Some of those costs are in the right-hand side and we've kind of broken down those costs based on different approaches to the roadway and how we're going to repair or rehabilitate those roadways. And we'll talk a little bit more about the different approaches as we move forward. But basically what the town has left with is a map on the right-hand side that shows all the conditions of the roadways. Red is poor, green is good. And we also have all the reporting, intersection by intersection, breaking down and understanding every segment of roadway in the community. We've also done a similar assessment of the sidewalk network as well. This is actually where the program started. I believe in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and two thousand twenty, we conducted the sidewalk network assessment. And you can see the overall assessment deemed that there were one hundred and forty-nine miles of sidewalk. And then there's a breakdown by condition as well. Again, this is a holistic look at the right of way and all of the assets in it. So this allows us the information that we're doing our cost estimating and understanding what roads and what segments we're gonna repair, what the condition of the other assets are along with the roads. So Erin, you wanted to talk about the program's history?
Just to, yeah, if you want to go ahead and move forward, I think we're just gonna go through very quickly. We wanted all of this to be sort of available as part of this presentation so that you could see what work has been done between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty four. It's organized in the same format. You can see the type of treatment and the bonded wearing course, reconstruction, mill and overlay, the area, the length in terms of miles, the cost expended by the town to get that work done and it's mapped. And we can go to the next slide. That is now also available in a dashboard that we have on the website. So you can see previous work and you can click years on and off and you can look at the type of treatment. And then we have that projected for the five-year CIP going forward. So we also have a summary in terms of expenditures for sidewalk work. And we did have a bump in two thousand twenty four. And this was, we're in the third year this year of a three-year contract for sidewalk. We also put some of that money towards supplies and materials where Kevin has been able to do some of the spot work in-house where we have several panels that we need to replace. And this inventory, we are going to update this summer as well. So we'll have a full new updated inventory on number of ramps, the condition of the sidewalk, and we'll continue to work. And so I do want to just sort of emphasize that the sidewalk inventory also looks at every ramp and the condition of the ramp. And so we pull out and do both ramps and sidewalk replacement as part of that contract. And then just looking at sort of a summary of our work history to date. I think what you're going to see moving forward is more work hidden shoots.
The current capital planning. All right. With that, as Commissioner Chu mentioned, we're really looking at having a data-driven approach that is predictable and transparent and that is efficient as possible. So the department's approach to planning future paving work maximizes the use of the town's dollars by prioritizing paving based on the cost benefit value that that work provides to the network. So here we are defining the cost benefit value using the pavement condition index of the roadway, the traffic volume on that corridor, and then the unit cost and the life extension provided by the recommended type of treatment. So this is a quantitative predictable approach that inherently prioritizes work that is that lower cost preservation work and maintenance work on higher volume roadways that provide more connectivity value to the community. And also prioritizes work that have those lower PCI values. Prioritizing this preservation work allows roads that are in good condition to stay in good condition, delaying and preventing the need for that more expensive rehabilitation or reconstruction work down the road. But we do recognize that a lot of the roadways in town are already in poor condition and particularly those lower volume residential roads that just would never rise to the top of the prioritization list with this methodology. So our process also proposes to set aside a certain amount of the CIP funding for lower volume roadways with those lower PCIs or the worst offenders, just to make sure that those roadways don't just continue deteriorating indefinitely. So approximately half a million to a million dollars is proposed to be used for those roads, either to perform the treatment that is recommended based on their PCI. So you know, if it has a PCI of forty, it would warrant reconstruction. Or another approach that we've been discussing is doing a maintenance overlay program, which has been very successful in Newton. And the intent of that program is to simply overlay these roadways that are in the worst condition to act as a stopgap measure before, you know, while we are waiting to be able to come there and do the treatment that is actually warranted. But it at least slows that deterioration as you can. All right. So as already had been mentioned, the type of treatment that is identified for a given roadway is based on what the PCI is. So this graphic kind of gives typical rules of thumb for what treatments are appropriate for different types of PCIs. There are certainly exceptions to this rule, but this is kind of standard practice. So routine maintenance typically in the form of crack sealing is really just for the roadways that have a PCI of at least eighty and can keep a roadway that is in that highest PCI bracket there for about three years. Crack sealing is by far the lowest type, lowest cost type of treatment at about one and a half dollars per square yard. Preventative maintenance, which has been taking the form of a bonded wearing course, is appropriate for those roadways with PCIs around sixty-five to eighty with a cost of upwards of thirty-five dollars per square yards. So this approach entails a thin about three-quarters inch layer that is applied across the entire surface of the roadway. You might have seen that apply on the western part of Beacon Street last year, planning for the middle section of Beacon this year. This approach, this treatment can be used on roadways with a PCI under sixty-five. It just requires more prep work is required to create that uniform roadway surface before the final treatment is applied at the end. From there, some of the more conventional treatments for rehabilitation include mill and overlay, which is for roadways with a PCI of at least forty-five. And in that treatment, a thicker surface, you know, about an inch and a half to two inches is milled off the top of the roadway and then a new layer of pavement is added. That treatment's about ninety-five plus dollars per square yard. And then finally, the most invasive and certainly the most expensive option is that major rehabilitation, which is reserved for the worst roadways. And in that situation, the entire pavement box is either replaced or reprocessed to be in better quality and be able to be reused. So that is by far the most expensive, at least seven hundred and sixty dollars per square yard and certainly upwards of that.
Sure. So, you know, one of the things that we do as part of the payment management process is, and ultimately, what you all want to know is what is going to happen up to our roadway network over time? And that is that PCI projection. So what we're showing on screen here is the two thousand twenty-two model that we've put together kind of showing that five million dollars will kind of keep the community at the same level as it would be moving forward. One of the things that we've done as part of the calibration of the program and one of the things that we've seen since this time is the escalation of construction costs. Also, some of the ancillary work that Brookline does when they go and repave or rehabilitate a roadway such as the sidewalks and the curb ramps and some of the other ancillary work that goes with it. We want to capture that as part of all of the unit costs. So see on the right-hand side, when we did this analysis back in two thousand twenty-two, you kind of use some standard unit prices. And you can see that those in the next slides have changed significantly since the time of this model. So this second model is a proposal that we've kind of put together in terms of some of the policy changes that we're looking at implementing. But looking at, you know, doing the ADA improvements that are needed along these roadways and making sure that those are completed as part of the process, while also completing the rehabilitation that's needed to improve the roadway network. So you can see on the right-hand side, the assumptions in unit costs, specifically on the minor and the major rehabilitation jump up pretty substantially based on the differences of what Brookline completes and what needs to be completed and also the construction cost from two thousand twenty-two. So you can see in the first one, it was sixty dollars and a hundred dollars with preventative maintenance at twenty. And then on this new one with calibrated prices for the community, it's thirty-five, ninety-five, and one sixty. Obviously, with that in play, the money doesn't go as far as it was intended to in the initial model. And you can see that five point five million dollars is now degrading the overall road network. And now it's taking seven point five million dollars to be able to keep that road, to keep that road network in the same condition. We also did an analysis to look at if we kept the policies in place as they are and completed all of the complete streets upgrades that are necessary as part of the existing policies. You can see on the right-hand side there, the unit cost specifically for minor and major rehabilitation go to one sixty-five and two twenty-five per square yard. And again, that can vary from street to street because of the fact that different streets require different processes. But you can see it jumps from ninety-five to one sixty to one sixty-five to two twenty-five. Again, that same modeling structure with no other changes to the model at all, simply just the unit cost. You can see that five point five million now is dropping off significantly over a five-year period. And it's now taken nine million dollars to complete the same amount of work and keep the roadway network at the same level as it is today. So the last, the last model that we're showing here is the approach to, you know, try to look at the goal of getting to a seventy PCI over the next five years. And you can see that that number in order to kind of keep that there and also only do the ADA upgrades, not full complete streets, is eight point four million dollars. So we can talk a little bit more in detail about these as we move forward.
Great. We're now gonna pivot to the work plan that we've developed based on this CBV-based approach. So we have used this prioritization process to come up with a plan for work through two thousand thirty, covering over eighteen miles of roadway within town and, as you can see, tackling a lot of the highest volume town-owned roadways within the community. So these charts here, and the numbers are very small, summarize the amount of preventative maintenance and rehabilitation work that is planned for each year through two thousand thirty with a target overall construction cost of about four point five million dollars each year. So while each year has a mix of bonded wearing course, mill and overlay, and in some years reconstruction, you can see based on the quantities that the overall, the program overall does prioritize that lower cost bonded wearing course to make those significant strides in the overall network with the amount of money available. I did want to note that these tables do not include any of the routine maintenance work, like crack sealing and full depth patching, just because those work plans are really finalized on a more of a year-to-year basis. But in each year, a certain amount of funding would be allocated to that more routine payments. So I have two slides after this that go list out all the roadways planned for each year. So mainly for your reference, I don't want to go through these in detail. It's important to note that while this list is very well thought out, guaranteed to change at least slightly over the next five years based on unforeseen circumstances like emergency utility work.
One of the things I just want to mention there too is, you know, I've worked with over a hundred communities and doing one-on-one programs. And this is meant to be a living, breathing document. So every year we meet with the team, we look at what was accomplished in the prior year, make sure that we're recalibrating, make sure that a roadway didn't, you know, deteriorate a lot quicker than what was modeled in the initial assessment, and make sure that we do an update there. So again, we can kind of say that the two thousand twenty-five roadways are really pretty close to final at this point, but the future years, they tend to shift and move between year to year, but these are the priorities as of today.
All right. So aside from all that paving work, the department is also utilizing that annual sidewalk funding to reconstruct the high-risk sidewalks within town. This slide shows the current unit pricing that's used for the sidewalk work, which is about three hundred dollars per linear foot. That's a single five-foot wide sidewalk and granite curbing, which is the town standard. It's also about eight thousand dollars to reconstruct each pedestrian program. So the annual funding for twenty-five and twenty-six at about four thirty-three and seven fifty will focus on the sidewalks identified as being in poor condition based on the latest inventory, particularly the poor-conditioned sidewalks within a thousand feet of any school. We're also trying to get ahead of the upcoming paving work by doing the sidewalk work along that corridor, the prior construction here. So the sidewalks are all ready to go and then the paving work will be the last step of, you know, rehabilitating that particular roadway. Currently planned improvements to the bike network using the existing funding and the fiscal year twenty-six funding are also provided here again for your reference. You can see that efforts include not only corridor improvements, but also installing new bike racks and updating the green routes network plan to guide those future investments. Next, intersection improvement projects that are currently underway include the Hammond at Woodland intersection. As long as you know, it's a high-cracks location that has excess pavement and outdated signal equipment. So the design is currently being advanced and will upgrade the traffic signal equipment and provide safety benefits for all travel modes. And this does align with the larger road diet that is being implemented on Hammond Street to reduce travel speeds and improve bike safety in particular. So construction on that intersection project is anticipated to begin later this year. Also underway are improvements to the pedestrian crossing at Carlton and Polchester. And that's right in the vicinity of the recently renovated Carlton Street footbridge. This location sees a ton of pedestrian and bicycle traffic. And if you know that specific area, it is a mid-block crossing that has limited sight distance and pretty fast-moving traffic. So it does present a safety concern for non-路人ists. So to lower vehicle speeds and improve, increase awareness of those crossing at that location, this project will install a raised crossing and those flashing beacons on either approach. And then other projects listed here are the traffic calming initiatives that are currently underway. So that includes implementation of speed humps as well as twenty mile-per-hour signage and implementation of the safety improvements that were detailed in the Upper Washington Street Pedestrian Safety Improvement Plan. And last but not least, this table just provides a snapshot of the various costs that are being incurred to complete the job, but all the cost planned for and designed, these roadway and sidewalk improvements. This table in particular just highlights some of the fiscal year twenty-four or twenty-six funding. It's not an exhaustive list, but again, it gives you a sense of the level of effort that's going into the different elements of this program. With that, I will turn it over to Amy to talk through the policy updates.
I'm gonna be talking through the different policies that will help support us as we deliver this incredible work thing, as Jessica said. So that's a brand-new pavement preservation, maintenance, and management policy, and then updates to the complete streets policy, the trap calm policy, and sidewalk and ramp policy. The new pavement policy has been with the goal of extending the life for urban assets. It allows us to use a mix of different methods, preventative methods, as well as full-depth reconstruction and really everything half queen to help us complete this task. And the model that was developed by Apex really helps us select the right road at the right treatment of the And the model that was developed by Apex really helps us select the right road at the right treatment at the right time to be as cost effective as possible. This policy also decouples maintenance and capital investments, probably most importantly. While still allowing projects to be coordinated with other goals, if there's funding available with the public involvement process has been addressed. And the table to the right can kind of see some of the, some examples of these, these other goals. Vision zero should be in the interventions with these street projects. Something from the bike plan, priorities of the pedestrian advisory committee. Those types of goals, we think that with thoughtful network planning, we can be much more efficient both in with time and dollars and achieving better outcomes for all users. The complete streets policy, so the previous policy tied complete streets objective objectives to maintenance projects. And that led to time and cost inefficiencies, designs need to be reviewed. And there basically called the process, these things take time and money. And in the meantime, what we're doing, fulfilling all these requirements, our roads would start, would continue to grade, degrade. And we would just end up spending limited payment funding, adding complete streets to streets that don't, that don't have the highest need, that are really just prioritized based on pavement condition. So our updated policy instead, instead of applying the the history's policy to all streets equally, it prioritizes those that meet the town goals, various town goals, could be load shift and multimodal access. Improve safety for bikes, pets and transit users. And it also identified a list of priority streets, which just began the last one, right? And that we can use to prioritize our capital funds. These streets have regularly with accommodate a lot of different features such as separate bike lanes or bump outs, maybe bus shelters. All that will depend on, you know, the context of the street. And it's also either part of or connected to priority network for bicyclist pedestrians or often a bus route. The traffic policy, so our previous policy was written in such a way that traffic calming projects were only done per request, not, you know, driven by data that demonstrated that need. It also described a very time consuming data collection and analysis process that to just prove that the requested street needed traffic calming. It also required multiple public meetings to develop a very complex multi-faceted plan that was expensive to design and to build. And would also take a lot more time. So all these things and no consulting and huge backlog of requests. We just essentially were not able to follow the policy and work through these requests faster than they were coming in. So the new policy instead uses existing data sets, which honestly were not available when the first policy was written to streamline the analysis and of requests and identify projects. So being able to move faster, this will help us address those backlog of requests. And also prioritize those streets that have demonstrated need based on the data, but may not have a request associated with them. Additionally, we can, we'll be focusing on fulfilled improvements that are low cost to design and install, and that'll further speed up the process. The policy also takes another look at the public engagement process and make sure that it's right size. The public can find meaningful input, but that will not sound to a huge number of meetings. Looking at that table to the right, you can kind of see some statistics of the current traffic calming program. So currently there's thirty six requests on our list covering thirty two different streets. Obviously, there's been some double requests covering about fifteen miles of roadway in town. The existing unallegated funding, traffic calming plus the ask for F R twenty six is a little over four hundred thousand dollars. We estimate very considerably at about twelve thousand dollars per speed hub. Seeing about thirty or three hundred foot spacing, we get about thirty six speed hubs on roughly two miles of street. For reference, our last traffic calming project that was completed on Beverly Road cost over a hundred thousand dollars more than that and only covered half the miles, less than half the miles on street. So we're paying more for our money with this. This will just kind of show you the breakdown of the process. Again, we're using data to identify eligible streets, looking at the entire roadway network, not necessarily basing on, basing it on a request. And then prioritizing those eligible streets using multiple data sets, including the presence of requests, we still want to honor those. Then we identify the streets that we wanted for projects on and they turn them into adjacent streets to form like kind of clusters that were not putting speed hubs on one street and diverting the speeders around to the next street. And we design, we come up with a plan based on the clusters, bring that to a public hearing. And of course, we'll be giving the butters and the requesters, if there is one that's noticed that they can obtain full public input on those projects. And the last policy is the sidewalk and ramp policy. That our previous approach meant that sidewalk work was driven by paving condition, we talked about before, not need for sidewalk improvements. So we've had dedicated sidewalk funding, but the prioritization of it, the actual work was suboptimal. With this new policy, it decouples the sidewalk prioritization from paving work, meaning that sidewalk money is now spent where it is needed most in areas of high pedestrian use, where there's poor conditions of sidewalks and ramps and other priorities that the public has let us know about just near schools or commercial areas, things like that. ADA ramps programs are still brought to compliance with paving work, that is the law. Sidewalk work can be also be done ahead of the paving work, as Martin mentioned. All this just takes adequate planning, which I believe you can do with these policies. This graphic here just shows kind of by the nature of sidewalk prepare, maybe it's a panel here, panel there, block at a time. This is driven by someone needing inputs, working together to create a fully accessible network. And finally, all of these policies, updates and new will work together to create a paving management program that is more structured and predictable, that is more cost efficient, so that allows us to combine work and goals when feasible. And that priorities is capital funding to address multimodal safety and connectivity goals. It also makes sure that the spending is as equitable as possible. And finally, it creates a process that's transparent and easy to understand for the public to consume. Well, that's it. I'll wrap it up.
Great. Alright, and actually, you can go ahead, because we just have a couple more slides if you want to just advance this next one. So we do have now a dashboard, as I mentioned, so information on on the town's website, you'll go to Department of Public Works, Engineering and Transportation, you go to the the projects page, and you can go to the pavement management program. It's actually providing pavement management and preservation program, you'll see this presentation. The full pavement condition report, listing all the roads alphabetically. We also have a map, so you can see the condition of the roadway treatment. We have our two thousand and twenty five plan for roadway construction, multimodal safety improvements. We also have the roadway moratorium listed on there as well, so you can see the roads that are under the five year moratorium. We have our five year paving plan, and then I mentioned the dashboard, which is, you know, a GIS map where you can click on and off the roads, the year, the type of treatment, et cetera. And the repair category of the road, next slide. So want that information to be available to the public, we want this program to be really clear, to be very transparent. Construction season is here, we have a really robust lineup of work that we're excited to get started on for this construction season, we're going to keep very busy, but we're in good hands there. These four policies that we've discussed are really important to the success of this program for the town. In essence, the policies were kind of working against each other in terms of overall asset management and maintaining the roadway in good condition is is directly related to safety for all modes. We also want to be able to maintain the sidewalk in good condition and be prioritizing that based on where there's the greatest need. So that's what these policies will do. We have the one new policy, the other three are frankly just amendments and updates that allow us to do that, but doesn't take away from the importance that's outlined in each of those policies. And with complete streets, what we'll do is we'll be prioritizing our complete street work so that where we are implementing complete street, it's justified in terms of the cost and the process, where we'll have the biggest gain for the, for the community. And then funding as we go forward is going to be really important. So I think as we demonstrate what we're able to deliver with the change in the updated policies and this approach, more and more, we're going to want to make sure that we are improving the overall condition and implementing this policy and this program. So I think with that, and I think that was the concluding next steps, we have an appendix that you have. We don't need to go over that, but it lists sidewalks, it lists the roads, it just provides you some data so you can actually see some more information, you know, you can see how much of the road, et cetera. We also are tying a lot of this to metrics so that you can see what the square yardage cost is and what you'll be getting in terms of our deliverables. So are we anything else that you want to add on this? So that, that's our proposal, that's, that's where we are. We think that we're positioning the town in a very advantageous way going forward, and we welcome your questions.
So I should say that, for those of you who don't know, I'm a refugee from the transportation board. So I know, I know you know that, at least some of these folks perhaps don't. I have two comments and three questions. One comment is, I very much appreciate the work at Colchester and Carlton, there's a bike and bicycle there in the case of someone that's killed. And a bike accident, and so that's definitely a place where you want to spend some effort, appreciate that happening. The dashboard is great. I think Paul, you and I talked with Commissioner Shute about this concept some time ago. It's wonderful to see this come forward and to see this stuff be available to the public, that's going to be so useful to you as well as to us and of course to the public. Okay, so my question. One is, we have a vision zero policy that's been put together. There is pretty clearly an opportunity for integration between what you're doing here and vision zero. That you're aware of that. Okay, good. The second thing is, the cost effectiveness of bonded wearing, of course, the overlay versus mill and overlay. If it's thirty five dollars or so per square yard and it lasts eight years for the bonded wearing course versus ninety five dollars in something the last twelve years. A very simple minded math says, well, one costs you four dollars and forty cents a year, the bonded wearing course, and the other costs you eight dollars a year. Why would you choose the more expensive, I'm sure there's a reason, but why would you choose to mill and overlay when you, in the circumstance where you might instead save money in the long term using the bonded wearout?
Start us off. So I would say that where yard price, planning price is based on applying bonded wearing course to a roadway that has a PCI of sixty five to eighty. As I mentioned, if you apply that treatment to a roadway with a PCI of fifty, that should be built and overlaid. The square yardage price will be higher because you have to do a lot more crap work for it to be.
So you have to mill it in.
You, so you don't necessarily, you know, you have to do expensive patching, crack ceiling, that sort of stuff.
Okay, alright, that's that, that makes sense, thank you. The last thing is, we have talked at various times when we give utilities the permission to dig up the street. The, the condition that they put it back in is sometimes problematic. And I know we had this conversation about at where the biggest street had been repaved west of Washington Street is a place where they just gave them
Williston.
A permission, is it Williston or further, anyway, wherever it is. What can we do more broadly to get utilities to to do a better job of putting things back together? Is there any, any way to tie them up with some kind of promise or funding ahead of time or?
First thing, we're trying to really coordinate with the utilities to make sure that we know all their plans and put that into a program and make sure that we're behind them. They come in and do their work and we come away, but it's not always possible because things come up with them. And but again, this is all after work's done. You know, if it's particularly if it's roads that have been newly repaired, we're going to look care to care and, you know, full restoration will be big, large ones, not just the retention.
Okay.
So we'll do that, and if it doesn't work out, if there's a bug right or if there's a channel right or there's a problem, we'll maybe come back and fix it.
But there's no way to get funding from them so that we can get the work done on our own to make sure that it meets our standards?
I guess we could, we did something on, actually, we were talking about that with grid. But typically, we have them do the work.
Yeah.
And we own the problem.
That's exactly it. So once you, we did actually, we're going to do that on high. And the price they were getting and then the unit, the price that we had made it so that it wasn't worth us actually taking the money and then taking the responsibility for their trench.
Yeah, okay. National Grid is just, it's made such a mess. And their patchwork is not great.
They always do a quick patch.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. They don't always come back. But it's the coming back that, you know, like, what decade will come back?
And I wonder though, if some of those other patches end up not necessarily being grid, but it's the, you know, it's the the contractor for the development and we have a very aggressive permanent inspector that really does stay on top of National Grid, on Eversource. We're meeting with National Grid actually tomorrow morning to talk about the restoration of Washington Street. And they have work to do there, obviously. And they're not done with their, they still have work to come back and do them to finish up in the village, but we want them to do at least two Cypress for restoration right away. So anyway, we, it is very frustrating, it's frustrating for us. And, you know, we're running that balance between, we are very clear with what our program is. And then we get some of these sort of curveballs sometimes from the utilities, but it's all, it's either associated with emergency work or associated with critical service to areas that the community needs. And so we have said no many times on work that we're like, that can't happen here. You need to try to find another way and come back. But, but some of it you know, ends up being critical work for them to do.
And just thinking about the impact on PCI and all of those patches.
That's right.
Okay.
Well, yeah, a couple of points. First, thank you for the presentation, lots of detail. When you were mentioning the dashboard on the website, I tried to find it. It's not the easiest thing.
It is not, I mentioned that.
If we could put a big button on it, just, you know, simple.
Yeah.
It was very, it was very hard for me to do it. The second thing is, is the utilities, I agree with them, so I'm going to skip that. In the presentation, it's mentioned to meet the multimodal and mode shift goals. What are how the multimodal and goal shift goes? Are they specific or is it just shift?
I mean, some of them are to come, like we're working on redoing the, or upgrading, I should say, the bike network plan. So some of it will be decided there from using the green routes, current green routes plan as a base point. And then road shift, I do believe it was, there was some road shift in the previous climate action plan. And there's more in our call from several years ago as well, that definitely.
So I guess, I guess, thank you for that. I think I'm specifically looking for either lane miles or the locations, or like very specific, so we know what's ahead of us for mode shift and, you know, what is the cost to, there's a cost to shift.
So I think some of that could also be, we are doing like performance metrics as part of the vision zero plan. And those metrics have yet to be decided, so some of that could be captured there. That's something we have to move it out of the dashboard. If you want to quantify, you can put that out there.
I also, I think that the green routes, the bikes or master plan that the town this year is going to really demarcate and look at it in terms of feasibility will be a public process that comes through the transportation board and will help them understand really what is that network, what is Comes through the transportation board and will help understand really what is that network, what does it look like, what are the lane miles, and then what are the priorities? Um, so that we can all talk about that and understand that together.
Good, but a couple of questions. And one of them, you met, talked about traffic calming quests. Are those premised in accident data? To what extent is accident data a part of? What prioritizes a certain street or leads to a traffic calming proposal?
The request is the register twice. Um, the previous policy required them filling out, you know, a whole form and stuff like that. We're kind of going with that. And more or less just taking email, um, describing the situation, consider that as a request, more signatures. Um, but once it's, once the request has been made, or if we identify a street based on data that is eligible and where the um traffic calming. Crash data is certainly part of the of the equation. There's a whole bunch of different um data points that we uh. Have score each street on, and that's how we decide the prioritization.
Is that crash data publicly available in digestible manner somewhere?
Uh, sort of, yeah, like, yeah, there's the MassNet website that has um some different crash analysis tools. Uh, there's a little bit of learning curve to them, um, but yeah, that data is available. We also uh cross check with. Um, the police often, if we need more information about this, the MassNet data is not uh super um. Uh, detailed as far as like a recovery of the crash report, like what actually happened.
Is that crash data a significant component of the calculus around what you prioritize?
Yeah.
squarely around PCI?
No, no, not PCI, not at all. Yeah, um, so it's it's crash data, it's lane use, like a uh street that's near a school. Count more than one that's not, um, you have tons of lane uses in there. Um, we look at uh. Uh, census data, so like census tracks with uh zero um car households. That's also a point, uh, the existence of requests is a point.
And verifying speed. Sometimes those are perceived, um, yeah, probably in terms of speed.
Yeah, yeah, we have like a big tree, big data that is sent right down the street, like, we're looking into uh some others as well that captures speed of. First going by using cell phone data, um, and so we can get that like the eighth percentile, ninth percentile of each street.
All right. Then my other question was around the discussion about the sidewalk network. So heard a fair amount about sidewalks in various states of disrepair and prioritizing where ramps are located. But what about sidewalks that don't yet exist? And how does that factor in? Because especially in in this part of town that we're in, there are many streets that don't even have a sidewalk at all, uh, at least on one side. Hmm. And is that at all part of your analysis?
So yeah, I would say those, those need to be new CIP projects, like a full, like new sidewalk for. Whatever street it is, that's, it's inexpensive, um, it's an expensive capital project. So we need to start incorporating specific neighborhoods or roads. Um, where sidewalks may be needed and program that into the CIP.
I just wanna start by saying thank you, um, and I I I can't say thank you enough. I mean, I. Everything that I heard today sounded so right. It just sounded like we're. We're embarking on something new that is going to, and 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 I I hope you will help us understand how new this is. I'll interrupt my question and just say, can you just sum up for those watching and for those who are gonna be introduced to this in the future? What is the difference between the way we were approaching the maintenance, street maintenance needs until now? And the way we will approach in the future?
So I would say probably historically, it was just done with sort of. Some a bit of political whim and um. Phone calls and, you know, some, certainly some assessment by um the engineering team, but that was kind of what was making up. The work each year was very small amount of funding that was actually going into the roads. Obviously, there's been a significant lack of investment. In the public right of way. The current condition is problematic, but no matter what, it is going to take us time. To get us to a place where we overall have a better improved condition.
Mm-hmm.
But following that, you know, we had the overall conditions assessment and we're looking to um. Use that to make decisions. This cost benefit value then drives where we can get the biggest bang for the town's bar. It's not always, you know, and it's looking at volume, it's looking at number, you know, kind of vehicles per day and where we're gonna get the that best value. But what was happening is that because of the policies we have in place, we would get that. And then we would need to do a full complete street analysis. We would be then looking at sidewalks and then maybe areas where. Maybe one of those roadways doesn't have a sidewalk, but now we're designing a fully sidewalk, we're doing bump outs, we might be looking at a bike lane. And it's becoming a multi-year project, because you know, all of those, you know, we have limited. Not space in the public right of way, people have different wants. So instead of just managing the asset, we were now actually fully changing the geometry.
Mm-hmm.
And in an extensive um process that became um very cumbersome for staff, very expensive. And was diminishing the amount of work we could actually get done while their asset continued to deteriorate.
Mm-hmm.
So now by decoupling this, we will continue with the cost benefit value model for the the roadway condition. But complete streets will be evaluated on their own merit, so we can prioritize those based on their own merit along with sidewalks. We want sidewalks being good condition uh as well as the roads.
Um, will will complete streets in uh going forward um always imply. Uh, a grant seeking process that that becomes part of the delay and them actually.
Not necessarily. No, I think that, I think there are different um sort of. There are different interventions you can um do with complete streets. Uh, not all of which require the level of um change and investment. Uh, that is being contemplated exactly on Washington Street. I think that's a great example. So Hammond Street. Um, is uh gonna be a road diet, uh, really done with um some bollards. We have the new signal that, you know, is going in. But other otherwise, we're um doing the bonded wearing course, um, some bollards and striping. And we're able to, uh, we think make significant improvements by doing that as part of that, that project. So much less expected.
Uh, and 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 given um the uh levels of annualized uh maintenance and. Repair and uh re- replacement projects that are already annualized in our out years. How much of increase are, is this gonna mean for us to try to come up with additional monies in our out years? Or or does this assume we can actually do it with the money we already have in our five year plan? Uh, for annualized spending on that.
I think those current dollars, or is that?
That's all current dollars. It has a little bit of a uh um hat on per year in terms of percentage um increase. But it's it's basically on today's dollars. So it depends what happens with the construction industry and those costs. Um, again, that's why this is a living breathing document. We wanna make sure that we updated um on an annual basis to be able to kind of forecast that out for the future.
Yeah, okay. I I didn't hear the phrase quick bill used in this presentation. Is that in our language?
I I think for the, for the speed humps.
Those, those are the quick build, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Speed humps are a pretty quick build. You base, more or less base them on a detail, construction detail, you know, maybe like a full design to do them. Um, there's other quick build materials we're looking at for uh traffic bombing.
Yeah, I've seen um communities where they apply quick build as a description of this project, which is a road, you know, reconstruction project. Is gonna be a quick build project. It'll start in March, it'll be done in, you know, August. Um, are we at that level?
Not. This is a significant improvement, but still a lot of, you know, a lot of time and work has to go with it. You still need some, you know, we still need survey data when we're going out to do this work. So we need to do that planning. It needs proper engineering. Everything goes up to bid, um, and then we're bidding that and we're also, um, it's quicker bills. It's quicker bills.
Yeah, well, I just wanna thank you again, and I think the people in Brooklyn are going to be so delighted. Uh, when they fully grasp that we have something new here in many different dimensions. That's gonna make our road maintenance programs very understandable, um, and give people a lot of hope. Their streets will eventually get, get done.
Yeah.
One quick question.
Yeah, um, so again, thank you. Um, it is amazing change. I know it's all data driven now. So. One of the things that we started with originally was complete streets kind of being a barrier to road maintenance. And then you fixed that by decoupling. Uh, but still, there could be a street that's targeted for complete streets treatment. But you're not gonna get to them for five years, and it still needs some love. What is the extent of the love that you can put into a complete street, uh, named complete street that isn't gonna be, you know, get the full treatment? You can still do a bonded, we can do.
With the bonded wearing course, we frankly could be, depending on the work that is to come, we might be doing a melon overlay.
Okay, and I think that's important. So if if somebody sees that their street is on the complete streets list, it doesn't mean that the road, they're gonna be driving down. The rocky road for the next ten years.
That's right.
If 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 the road is still gonna be maintained.
Yes.
Uh, and 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 improve until a full complete streets.
That's right, and really sort of shorten that window so that we are looking at this in terms of asset management.
Right.
So I wanted to try and quickly, since we've been talking about complete streets and Vision Zero, I think one really good example we haven't talked about yet is. One of the roadways planned for this year is Chestnut Hill Avenue, which is on the complete streets priority network. And it's also on the high injury network for the Vision Zero plan. So that corridor, based on its PCI, was flagged for a melon overlay. But as part of that paving project, we are using earmarked uh Vision Zero funds to. Put in flexi posts for a new bike lane and do rates median islands to improve pedestrian safety. So.
You know that there's significant uh neighborhood opposition to what's going on there.
We're working with the community to to get through a plan that everybody can.
Yeah, so you got some work to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Totally process is continuing.
Okay, we'll pay out from that. Any other questions?
That's great, thank you.
Thank you very uh. We have, we have homework.
Yeah, a little homework. Um, so what you have is the the new policy. And you have the red line sort of track changes and the clean copy for both complete streets. And for the um sidewalk and ramp policy. And then you have the clean version of traffic coming, because it's so much simpler. Before was um a little bit more of a process, one really a policy that there. That we stream on. What will you need from us on on Tuesday? Are you just gonna do the vote?
I think we're ready to do the vote. I mean, the um, I mean, we have this material. It's the same thing that was in the package. Um, and I think that, I just think we need time to digest, you know, a thick packet like this before we vote. Uh, not necessarily because we don't have the ability to vote, you know, uh, but, you know, we need to be able to explain to the community if issues come up. And what, what is it and, you know, out of next.
Yeah, no, of course. Just let me know what you may, if you need anything.
Is she, is Erin need this level of uh of team support uh next week?
No, no, I don't think so.
So I think, I I think the other, the other part of it is probably worth stating, uh, that that which is that we want people who. Uh, follow the proceedings of the select board to uh get a um a sense that we actually do pay attention. We have read this stuff in advance. Yeah. Uh, and then we're not rushing anything to uh to vote.
Yeah, great.
Uh, we just had a circumstance where we had a misunderstanding of the fact that we in fact had gone through that, all of that. Uh, so it's important for us to have that little bit of a window.
But we do have questions. We should send it to you ahead of time.
And it's a false one. How do we find the dashboard?
So you will go to, uh, and I think what we're gonna, we're gonna revisit the homepage. So I think that we can reorganize the buttons and it'll be right on front, but you go to the DPW website.
Yeah.
Engineering and Transportation.
Yeah.
And you go to projects, that's at the top.
Is it current projects?
You can actually, you go under projects and then pavement maintenance and preservation program should be a new one listed on the bottom.
So I see construction projects. I'm not sure I see projects. Uh, decline projects, that's right. Oh, maybe.
But it it so she, she, they know they need, it it needs.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Um, not a problem. And I, we were actually talking about that earlier today. That is a great page. We now need to organize the whole website so you can get to uh the information that we have there.
Very, thank you.
Thank you. I have a problem with that. First few pages. Should be a big one on the front. Well, it's okay.
Uh, so Chad, we can do the real estate, uh, committee or?
Well, Karen is here. But I mean, maybe it's best if we kick it off here and talk, and talk to what the impetus for this was. Um. I just wanna thank one Karen for, Karen did the, yeah, one coming back uh after the morning, um. Not being frightened away, um, to really putting this charge together. This came out of an idea that came up when um, um, part of the Maimanae School, Jack Clark Road came on sale. Um, and at the time, you may remember, there was community, you know, we had been renting that building. The schools had been renting that building for some time. While we opted not, the school opted not to review their offer for the lease, and the school, Maimanae School decided to sell the building. Um, the building has been sold. The new developers are um meeting with the community to determine what's gonna happen to that building. But at the time, there was um kind of a uh uh. Community response from certain members of the community basically said, why isn't the town buying this building? Um, couldn't we use it? And I think as we were talking through that, we realized that it really doesn't benefit us. To be so reactive to um a, the fact that a property comes on the market. Um, we really should have a better understanding internally about what we have, what we're doing with it in terms of real assets. And whether or not what our needs are, um, so that when things come on the market, we have a sense of what we need. And we can be proactive in that regard. But also, we have kind of an understanding of if we are, if we have assets that we're holding on to, that we can dispose of. Uh, or otherwise make better use of, we should be analyzing that too. Um, this goes all the way back to the issue. Um, right here, um, nearby with the um single family houses that we now rent out. Um.
From Lars Anderson.
From Lars Anderson.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the, at the time, you know, members of the board asked if there wasn't a higher or better use for those properties. And we had not done that kind of analysis of, you know, what we, what we have, what we were renting out, what we were using. Um, so now the building department has done that analysis, that initial analysis of what are we on, what are we doing with it? Um, and now we'd like to take the next step, which is to form a committee, a standing committee, to address. How the town deals with the property it owns, the real property it owns.
So, Jess, uh, I'm sorry, sorry, okay, go ahead. Um, I jumped in. I, I, I thought my son. It wacken up, I remember.
Sure.
Um, so that, but I'm glad you brought up the the, the single family homes and the leasing, I think, to a country class. Um, and we were gonna get that inventory to the board. Now we're now saying that, can we see that?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, I mean, that would be great to see that, because there was a question about how many do we have?
Yep.
How are they being used? Um, and so on and so forth. I'd hate to have to wait till a committee.
No, absolutely. We will get that to you.
Then my, my second question is about the membership. Um, I see it's very specific. One former select board member. Why, um, why would be that we'd be that specific? Um, as opposed to two, you know, a member of, appointed by the select board or two community? I see there's two members here, one additional member and then one former select board member. Um, I'm just curious about why it's that specific and two. I, I would rather see the select board be able to appoint two members from the community to this committee.
So I think the idea behind a former select board member is that you want historical knowledge. You want continuity of knowledge across different generations of the board, um. And the thought there being that presumably a former select board member is gonna have.
So as a future former select board member, I just wanted, wanted to say I had nothing to do with this.
Yeah, I mean, an example would be, uh, there's no one in the board except me who went through the uh Baldwin situation.
Yeah.
And there we thought a kind of any, we didn't really have a sense of, uh, you know, what we would do with it was we was determined that we didn't need. what we would do with it was we was determined that we didn't need it for the school.
Yeah.
So I mean, this, this policy would, um, would give us some guidance, um, in situations like that.
I, I agree with Paul though. I think there are a lot of people who would have that historic knowledge, whether they served on the select board or not. I was on the school committee at that time. I'm aware of what happened, but I'm not saying it should be formed school committee either, but just that there is a broader base of people who can fit that criteria.
Yeah, but I think also what they're thinking about is someone who's gone through the process of struggling, struggling with the issues that come up when, when we have properties that um you know, that become available or your community. I mean, it's more than just knowing what happens. It's really knowing what process that the select board went through in order to come to its conclusion that it came to. Maybe, maybe not, but I think.
Okay. As a, as a potential future former select board member.
Yes, yes. For that purpose.
Yeah, everyone?
Yeah.
So um, I, so I, my, my suggestion is on membership is that you, that there, I'm fine with uh a member of the select board who may serve as chair, uh, a building commission member, community preservation act member, advisory committee member. I would, I would like to see the select board then have two appointees that they could make. Uh, and if, and if the select board at that time chooses to use a former select board member because, you know, they, they, they choose that institutional knowledge or historic knowledge, then that's fine, but I would want to be limited. Um, and I had a former select board member call me and say, hey, uh, who, who, who are they thinking of? And I said, well, maybe they're thinking of you. And this person said, well, I can't do it because I'm conflicted. So I, I would, I, I think it's too specific and I'd rather see the board be able to appoint two members of the community and let us decide and deliberate as to who those two people are.
I'm just counting. I think I'm adding three members of the community then.
Well, there's, you have, uh, you have one former select board. That would be a member of the community. And then you have one additional member.
Oh, okay. I, I didn't hear you say that you agreed to the plan of a member.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And actually, the other thing I'd say is that, yeah, you know, the boards and committees can certainly recommend members to you, but it's ultimately your decision. But I think one of the most important things about this is that we are, what I think one of the institute, one of the institutions that functions best in this community is the building commission because it has long tenured, well-respected, neutral, very strenuously neutral um in uh volunteers on staff who are very knowledgeable about the work they do and take that very seriously. So that when they make a recommendation or a decision, people know that it's not based on, you know, uh, they're interested in a particular project or anything else. It's about the, all of that work. And that's the kind of standard that I said on this board. It's a similar sort of, you need, you need folks who are both, you know, interested in the work. But also um carry that sort of community reputation so that when a recommendation is made, particularly if the recommendation is no, you know, that people understand and are okay with that and aren't then pushing to go past this board and say, oh, I know you said no, we should really buy this.
Well, Chad is the, is the, is this committee making, this committee is making recommendations to the select.
Correct, correct? So ultimately your decision.
Yeah.
Or, you know, depending on what it is, it can be the county's decision, right?
So is this aimed at both uh disposing of property and potentially acquiring property?
Yes.
It is. Um, cause a couple of things, uh, it developed general prior policies for acquiring new property. We don't have a policy right now or, or a disposing.
Not that I'm.
Policy.
Yeah.
We even have a list of the properties that we would love to grab if they were to come on the market. We have this prior.
Well, well, Paul's question actually kind of gets, gets to what, what, what troubles me a little bit about this and it's not anything that, you know, and we can control necessarily. If you identify a property as being of interest to the town for acquisition, the price probably goes up. If you identify a property as being disposable by the town, um, you know, who, who knows whether, you know, at some point somebody's going to say, it sounds like you guys are pretty desperate to get rid of it. I'll offer you 50% off the assessed value, you know, whatever. Um, how, how do we do this in a way that is uh, smart um in terms of, you know, getting a good deal when we sell and getting a good deal when we buy?
Look her, but I think she's.
Yeah, she was about the answer. Yeah, yeah.
Um, we do have a list of properties that we own. We also have a um aging but still very well over strategic asset plan, which does not say these are the types of properties you want to buy specifically, but more in broad strokes. Then there's also the major parcel study, which says here are a bunch of sites, just based on size.
Yeah.
That we know about. So we kind of have the, the skeleton, the skeleton framework of that. But I wouldn't recommend that and the committee would start by saying, you know, talking for six months about a property loan, so was our specific property bought by. I think doing these other steps first, you know, as George Paul says, make sure you don't already have the property you need. You know, things, things like that, that these experts in real thing management know how to do. Um, then you can get to a point where you're ready to go into the executive session because you're talking about an interest in the property. That's one of the specific reasons to go into the session. So I think there's ways to manage that, but I think having professionals that do this, you know, day in, day out would be very helpful.
Mm-hmm.
But I think I was going to say something similar that Kara just said, that having in broad strokes about the type of property you might want to acquire and to serve what purpose without being so specific, as to say it must be this one, because I absolutely agree with you. That is a way to create uh disadvantageous market conditions for the town in either direction, whether it's for acquiring or for selling. Uh, I am very excited to see this uh committee being proposed. We had discussed something along these lines at the summer workshop. I do think it's uh something incredibly important. Uh, so I certainly am moving in this direction, even if we're uh suggesting maybe a different type of membership.
Yeah. Is this a, a working group or is it a, a quick subject?
Mainly if it's a normal select board committee.
Okay, it would be subject. Okay, so a lot of this will be discussed. Yes, certainly, but to, yes, to, to both of your points, yeah. This is a, this is, it's all the more important why we have general policies and procedures in place so that it's not an immediate, oh, we must have this building. It's a, we find that this thing meets this need that we have. We recommend something a bit on, but it's not, you know, we have to have this specific building. Um, then, you know, people understand, you know, the, the reality is when we, the last time we bought something big with Newberry, right? We, it was a protracted negotiation process, fully advanced and we got what we got, which is half of the total um, to, to, to the site, um, only after protracted negotiations. Um, so I think, you know, we definitely don't want to be in a position to say we need to have this or we need to get rid of this, but that's why having policies in place avoids that outcome because it's not about the specific parcel. It's about what the community's needs are.
There. Just to that point, to give a somewhat concrete example, and Regina's not here, but something that's dear to her heart is a park for precinct sixteen because uh the Baker playground, of course, is used by the schools during certain hours. And in thinking about where to put a park in precinct sixteen, sometimes people say, well, why not? Why doesn't the town buy a couple of houses, turn that into a park? So that's an example of what could be discussed without identifying, well, it must be these two houses.
Yeah. Um, it, I'm sorry. Well, uh, I, I think the examples from the past are kind of interesting and instructive. Uh, uh, one, one of them that I'm, I'm aware of, and I think other than I can, is there were people who thought we should have been involved actively in um trying to acquire the Pine Manor property. Um, but I'm not sure we ever stood a chance.
Poisoned that water.
Yeah, yeah, well, given the way that B C is very adept and agile and um and also.
Rich.
Rich and, yeah, and, and determined to expand. Um, they, they were in the game way ahead of any opportunity. We, we learned about it when we read that B C was going to fire us, right? But, well, okay, you're saying that's not true.
No, no, but a couple of things. Um, we have conversations with the major parcels owners fairly frequently. We had more intense conversations when we went in the strategic asset plan. What we saw unfold both at Newberry and Pine Manor is because of the state's objective that whether our students going to a school, that they aren't just left out, you know, in the, in the cold. And so the state's process of doing that is working with the school as they're closing and saying, what is your plan? Where are these students going next year? So both the case of Newberry and Pine Manor. What that means is, is another academic institution has basically a process, much, much, they will be the first.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, there were people too who were sort of agitating, we should use our eminent domain powers to sort of step in very aggressively in that situation.
Now, yeah, Pine Manor brings up an iteration that this committee should be um uh tasked with, and that is, you know, coming up with a way back. If it's Pine Manor, uh, B C, uh, see if there's some way in which we could do either a friendly eminent domain or acquisition or some, something uh for part of their parcel, uh, a part of that parcel that they're not using. For example, I always make the joke that great place to swim is because it's already wet. And that would be one of the issues we, we ran into when we were looking for schools. So I think that, that is a useful purpose to the committee. And I also would like to a, a, advocate for um a former select board member. And I give the example of how we have been using Dick Benka, right? Former select board member who not only, you know, knows a lot, but has, you know, type of um understanding of, of the history of the house like for has uh functioned in the past. It has been very, I think it's been very, very useful. And we don't normally think about that, so maybe putting it in the, in the chart would be a useful uh way of doing, uh, it would be a useful thing to do. Although I'd like to know what, um, what Chad's is thinking was when the, uh, whoever put together that.
Um, I personally don't feel strong on keeping that or not. That came from what we did with this strategic asset plan and it happened to be a great group of people that worked really well together to get that done. Um, the idea of it, okay, Charlie Sutton's, who he's been, you know, saying in his way for decades that what the town really needs is one of these, one of these, one of these. And he, you know, it's this kind of hallway pitch, um, to have the people that can move quickly and that are very coordinated and have that knowledge to be asked.
I think one potential way to bridge this divide would be to suggest someone who has deep institutional knowledge of the town, its boards, its functions, and then an E G former select board, so that it doesn't have to be, but it's mentioned as encouraged perhaps. Cause we, Dick Benka might not always be available. I understand for me, I was just like.
Well, Neil, Neil was very, Neil was.
These moderators. Other select board members whose career paths after select board, I'm flicking them out. So we'd be limiting this to two or three people realistically. And so I think encouraging it is one thing, but making it mandatory.
I, I personally, I think that it should be somebody who is either a former select board member or a former advisory committee.
Well, so, but I, so the thing is, let's, when we get into the discussions. Well, I just, I just, I've been following all of David's. I think that, that, you know, we, we are very good at interviewing, um, assessing and appointing committee members. So I think the select board's proven that they can do that work um without significant limitation. Um, and I, you know, if, if we think that it's someone of Dick Benka's capabilities is, is the person to appoint, then we're. You know, without, without, without naming, you want to put his name in the chat?
No, no, it's youth. As I said, an example, we have you, we've said a couple of times in the past, so. Uh, but I, you know, I'm willing to go with David's suggestion. Um, you know, but I think we really should think about how do we make use of the knowledge and experience of people who are sort of mold out of the orbit of town government. I mean, there's always going to be people being.
If you just sent around the, the naturalists to all of your properties that we've been. And we put it in the acts of the public.
I mean, something else that I think this committee would probably discuss is also how to try to move away a little bit from all, almost always going the nonprofit route with maybe parcels. Cause we don't get significant tax revenue from that. If it ends, any, and uh, I think we've been shooting ourselves in the foot with that many times. I mean, there's some really prime parcels that we're getting no revenue out of.
So are we voting on this uh charge or Bernard or if we're going to vote on it, I would like to make a motion.
Well, is it in the, uh, in the agenda that we're voting? We always have that.
Yeah, discussion is possible, but so you may vote on it.
Yeah.
So you want to vote on it?
With that amended language, we can, we can, if that's the will of the board, we can take out this uh select board member, but put in language that David requested, for example, um, uh, instead of, so strike a former select board member and add, um, a member with deep institutional knowledge of um town uh boards and processes.
Right, and they can have an E G.
Yeah.
Former select board, former advisory committee.
Yeah.
So that we have the idea of what we're looking for with that, but not absolutely bound to it.
Got it.
And just so we have a clear understanding, because I realized I made a mistake on the agenda. I didn't change the title of it, but this would be the Real Asset Property Board and not the Real Asset Strategy Committee, which is what I accidentally put in the agenda.
And, and, and to be clear, you're going to, it's the select.
Yeah.
It's not, maybe. We're already appointing them, I guess.
I didn't get that in the beginning. I thought it was the staff. Yeah, you would want these people.
Okay, um, any other changes to this?
Did you make this specifically?
No, definitely. Um, okay, I move that we approve the real property. What, what do you call it now? Real property asset board?
Yes.
Select boards, real property asset board.
Yes.
Two boards. Um, charge, um, all in favor and who's indicated by saying our gentleman. But I, Michael Simon.
Hi.
Paul Warren.
Hi.
Dave Brown.
Hi.
They're both aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, next, board and commission interview. They have taken that, taken that Robert Rogers is um, on the Zoom.
Yes, I just reported a promoted Robert.
Thank you, Kara.
Hello, thanks Kara.
Hello. So, uh, Robert, why don't you introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in um being a member of the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee?
Uh, hi, um, yes, I'm Robert Rogers. I'm in um sort of near Coolidge Corner. Uh, I believe M L K Day is a very important day in the year, in the calendar uh for honoring the legacy of Dr. King, um, civil rights, equality, justice, fairness, um, community service is often uh part of M L K Day for many people. And um like this year, there was hosted the event. Uh, this wasn't community service, but bringing people together. Uh, the film Rustin was shown at Coolidge Corner Theater. And I attended that, um, having already attended one of the meetings as a guest. And uh, I thought it was well-run and organized. So I kind of have a sense of how the committee already works. I think that's going to be helpful. It could be helpful. Um, so yes, I, I just think there's a whole lot that goes into it. Would you like to know like personal background?
Uh, sure, I just want to let the, uh, let the board know that um Robert has attended meetings of the committee and in fact gave us some good ideas and insights. Uh, so we appreciate that. You know, give us some background on, on, yeah, personal background uh that you think's relevant to this um. Community. Pardon?
Uh, what I think is relevant, I grew up in Memphis, Tennessee. Um, I went to all male private school there. That's a side note, but uh, race relations are still um very much part of the community. And um, there's been a lot of progress. I mean, I'm not talking going back in time. I'm saying uh, there's been a lot of progress in the city. Um, a lot of churches work together, uh, African-American churches and white churches. Um, there's uh, yeah, a lot of diversity and actually a lot of places. Um, but I, I left Memphis when I was seven. Um, but I, I left Memphis when I was seventeen, uh, so it's been a while, but that's my hometown and I think carrying that with me is, uh, something that's still present. I'm an Eagle Scout too, so I did a lot of community service, uh, back in the day.
Great. Give any suggestions regarding, uh, the committee and, and its orientation, current orientation?
Are you asking?
Yeah.
Uh, any suggestions for the committee?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's, uh, so I went to the two meetings in January. One was prep for the film Rustin. And then the second one was preparation for Black History Month. And, um, I thought those were well run. Uh, the first, the first meeting I had some suggestions uh, about discussing the film. Uh, I didn't talk in the second one. I listened, but I thought it was well run. And, uh, I didn't go to the most recent one.
Yeah, probably. Yeah, I, you know, he said something, first, thank you for, uh, for your application, um, and, and your interest in this. You, you had said something earlier that kind of caught my attention about growing up in Memphis and you know, uh, working, um, or at least being aware of um, how, how things have improved and still the work that, that needs to be done. So you've, you've, we're not Memphis, but you know, I think we have some similar challenges sometimes. Um, so I'm curious, uh, somewhat maybe what Bernard said. Uh, how would that experience, uh, growing up in Memphis and being involved in, in, I guess scouts and Eagle scouting and the churches and trying to help bridge the gap and bring people together? Could you just give an example of?
Sure.
Might apply.
So bridging the gap, uh, I think making sure that, uh, there's much diversity if possible at a lot of events. Because I feel like probably white people are overrepresented. Or another way to put that, uh, some minorities are underrepresented at some events. And so there may need to be a bigger push in some areas to try to, uh, get people to attend who might not otherwise be thinking about it. I think that's important.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, unless there are any other questions. Thank you. And, uh, the select board usually makes this decision at a later meeting, probably our next meeting. Um, but I appreciate your, uh, application to the committee and appreciate your work that you, both time you spent, uh, with the committee, uh, at this meetings.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Okay. Uh, next, Center City Lot Committee. Um, we're, we're not going to be appointing anyone to the, uh, committee of this meeting, but next meeting.
Right, I, I would say a couple of words about it, I think. And so we, we started off with, uh, a committee of nine people, nine seats in, in charge and uh, it was called to my attention that, um, we had neglected to do a specific outreach to members of the senior committee, of the senior committee. Um, although we do in fact have one senior on the, uh, on the committee, Moshe Ben Akiva, who's a professor at, uh, transpatient planning at MIT. Um, there's a list of the, of the people who are recommended here. I think this, I, I, I obviously had a hand in choosing this committee from the applicants and, uh, I think it's a very strong committee. Uh, one of the things that we were very interested in looking at was, uh, considering was, we wanted people who were capable of being collaborative, uh, and, uh, and, uh, and willing to engage in a process where there might be some controversy. And certainly the Center Street Lot has been invested, has been looked at by, you know, like, um, the, the staff went back to two thousand to look at all of the studies of the Center Street Lot. I can go back a lot further than that to about nineteen seventy five. Uh, and it's, um, and I'm sure before that, uh, although the lot doesn't go back that much, but, um, so, uh, we, we, we recognize that there may be some, uh, uh, some things that are, um, uh, that people want to argue a bit about, and we're looking for people who we felt like could, uh, could contribute in a positive way to a, to an argument. I think we really do have that. Um, the, there's names on here that you don't recognize perhaps, and I don't, didn't recognize until what, what we did was take, um, people who we, uh, weren't familiar with, the staff, the staff or I, and, um, we interviewed them. Uh, and we had over forty applications, so we had to sort of screen that down and choose who to interview. But we, uh, uh, interviewed these people and a couple of them, um, are here on this, uh, this list. Um, Professor Ben Akiva and, um, Elaine Chao in particular. So, uh, we interviewed some other folks as well who were also on the, the list. So, uh, we're proposing to, uh, talk to Bernard and his suggestion was add two people uh, to their committee, uh, and to, uh, see people who were from the senior community. Uh, and, uh, we're having, uh, one person who, um, I think is a, would be a very good candidate and is, I think, known to all of us, uh, and, um, uh, another person who we don't know as well, and we're going to be that person, uh, this committee.
Okay, good. And you're not just someone who's a senior, someone who's involved with, for example, the senior center.
Exactly, exactly.
And, and, and understands, you know, the issues in this case, you know, this concern about parking, you know, and, and the slots are not, you know, immediately close to the center, but could have an impact.
Right, well, I, I should also say that I, I don't think there's anybody, uh, anybody who's uh, sensitive to Brookline, uh, Brookline issues who was suggesting that that parking disappeared. Nobody in this, right, you know, often I'll say, my own opinion is nobody's right mind is suggested that.
Yeah.
Can disappear. Um, the question is whether the lot can be at the very least be made more functional, more attractive, safer. Um, and then is there anything else beyond that? You know, should we deck it over with a swimming pool?
Thank you.
Um, uh, hey, it's a great place, public transit.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Um, uh, so, but I am joking, uh, and, but is there something else beyond that, uh, in a very ambitious way that we might think about? Or perhaps not quite that ambitious. Uh, so that's where the committee seems to be.
Right, well, that's. So my mind goes back to, uh, one of the earlier updates from the Washington Street Quarter. They have a complete streets project, and I remember that, um, I think we ended up specifically asking for the appointment of someone from the senior center that was very sensitive to those issues. And I think that helped a lot actually in bringing a lens and a perspective to the, to the design review committee. And that particular person actually ended up supporting, uh, the complete streets, uh, twenty five percent design. So I think it's important for that level of representation and strength that you.
No, no, it was another. We had applications from people who were, uh, involved, but we wouldn't specifically try to, uh, I tried.
I'm glad you're open to having that.
Good. And as I said, we had over forty applications. There's a lot of interest.
Okay, anything else? Um, so next, next week we'll have, um, an additional applicant or, you know, additional proposed member and a vote.
Is it additional one or two?
Two.
There's a lot to make it eight, uh, John.
Is this time limited?
Yes, no later than March thirty first, some six, okay.
Yeah, okay, uh, not time limited, when we get to vote.
No, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, it's pretty quick, good.
And, and, uh, the other one I'm asking at the last minute, does it have a budget?
Uh, within.
Yeah, the planning department.
Plan and park, plan and park, Zach Tesla, I'm, okay. Um, I, I guess I'm, you know, of a mood to say, um, I, I really find it useful every time we take one of these votes to have it identified, like what? It's, it's fine to say there's money in the budgets of plan, you know, in the planning department. But how much does it, you know, take out of that fund for us to just sort of say, yeah, let's do another committee here, um, that'll be working for a year? What, what, what does that cost us to, to, and what, you know, what, are we going to put any kind of a limit on, you know, how much is spent on this, um, given that it, it's not really clear that this is going to lead to there being substantial changes to the Center Street parking lot. It could be, you know, a nice conversation to have for the next year, but I'm not sure.
Well, it's one that.
Guaranteed of a result. There is a, uh, um, the, the planning department engaged, um, uh, consulting from Spec Dempsey, which does urban planning. Yeah. Uh, and we recognize the name. Yes, yeah. Uh, and, uh, partner that he, that he's worked with is Jeff Spec, who apparently is, uh, not apparently, is uh, a nationally known one, uh, for urban planning. Yeah. So that it's not a matter of nine people or eleven people get here and having this conversation. They'll have, uh, some help, uh, some.
No, that's one hundred and fifty five.
What do we approve? What are we paying for the?
Well, we approve the contract.
And you can, yeah, that's that kind of. And I think, you know, I'm sure in characters before you talk about the budget, that's something we'll have to discuss, you know, one of the big concerns of the twenty twenty two overall is increase the plant's capacity to be able to take on several projects like this at once. Uh, you said, you know, the biggest, the biggest single area of the planning to do correct is the compliment. And then from there you have a number of other corridor or individual lot projects. Economic development has smaller discrete projects that it's working. But all of those things add up in the main's budget and they really do, you'll see, we have a prioritization list up on the, up on the screen. She always says this every year, she talks about. There are, here's what, here's what we do here in the community, here's what we're doing this year, here's what we have the capacity to do this year, and here's roughly how much you cost.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you're not saying that, uh, generally, yeah, of including in, for example, a charge for a committee. As I mentioned, it's what I was trying to call staff, you know, what, how many staff people, for example, um, are going to be involved.
I don't necessarily know that's in a committee charge. I think it's something we can definitely provide. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, does belong, I agree, it does belong to the charge, but we should know. You, you, so I don't know whether Zach is spending ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent on this, but it's, we'll come up here first to know.
Yeah, you know, I, I really am not being whimsical about this. I mean, I, I have on my mind that, what, you know, we're down the road now on Beacon Street, uh, Pride Path project. And so far, it began with, let's engage a consultant to do a R F P or, or to do a feasibility study. And then the consultant recommended the R F P for there to be a design. And then the same firm that got the feasibility study ended up getting the design. After the design, God knows what's next. And we're all, at the same time, we haven't yet been given a fine cost of the, what, what would it cost to do a Beacon Street by, by that? There are estimates in the ballpark of twenty million dollars. And, um, people I'm sure are aware that one of the headlines just in the last week is there are unlikely to be earmarks for a while in future, whether they call them in Congress when they finally. Appropriations.
Yeah.
Um, well, the, the one federal grant that we got so far was in the earmark. Uh, and it was for a million dollars on a project that we're saying could cost twenty million dollars. And, and we don't know where the other nineteen is going to come from at this point.
Well, yeah, that's true. You don't know until you know, really, uh, and until you have the nineteen available, you're not going to do it.
Yeah.
It's very simple.
But they become self perpetuating and, and then we realized later, wow, we ended up spending a lot of money.
But what's the alternative? Where do you, if you have a concept, a plan, you know, desire and aspirations.
I, I love that a little better idea of what we're shooting for here. I mean, shooting for additional spaces for parking, we're shooting.
No, I think, I, I, I think I've described it as, uh, uh, as making a lot more user friendly, safer, and thinking about what else might be done, um, of the lot without, again, it's not stated in the charge. But I, there's nobody, uh, no, nobody in this right mind is going to think about some, uh, uh, disabling that as a part.
It's so user friendly right now that you can never find a space or.
But that is, that is an issue.
Well, no, but I mean, it's, as a parking lot, it's really effective. It parks a lot of cars almost continuously.
And I can usually find this, but John raises a really good point. Uh, and what he's raising is when we start something, we should know how big it is. So if I'm gonna hire a kitchen designer, I need to know whether I want to spend X thousands of dollars or ten X thousand dollars. Um, and I think what, and John makes a valid point, I, I've heard it because he's raised this another time, is when we start something, if we're going to spend five thousand dollars, you know, is that because in the end it might cost us fifty thousand dollars or five million dollars? And I think it is a reasonable question.
It's reasonable with, you know, just remember, uh, Center Street Lots is a unique parcel of property.
Agreed.
In the town.
Yeah.
And, you know, at some point we should figure out, you know, what is the most effective and useful use for it? Um, and, and, you know, that's not always going to start with the, with the, you know, ideas of where we're going in, like, so.
I'm just, I guess I'm advocating for, which is I don't always.
I just also want to add to, uh, John's point, if we take another step back and just look overall at all these different plans that are presented toward, uh, to us that are going to have costs in the end, and these studies are not at zero cost. And if you added all these various studies and plans together, it might come to a significant amount that perhaps could be allocated another way to have implementation of something that's more immediate. So I do think we need to be a bit more cost conscious about, uh, what is the purpose of the study? What is going to be the scope of what it is we're actually going to do with the results of the study?
Well, I think, so this is where I think the difference between the Beacon Street Pride Path, where there was a pretty, you know, a concept in place, the communities that we want to, we want to redo this in a certain way so that it is more friendly to a different type of transportation. It's more, you know, walkable, livable, all of that stuff. So there was a picture in our heads early on there with this. It really is a question, as Mike said, of what do we want this to look like in the future? And when this came before you initially to bring on the contract for the consultant, one of the things you raised was can we talk about, you know, things that are even further afield from using it as parking? Can we bring housing into the conversation? Can we do all of this? Is it likely, based on what's going to happen here, that we're gonna, because the committee is going to come back with a recommendation, you know, get rid of, get rid of the parking spaces and build housing here? Unlikely. Um, but it's possible. Um, and that means that the total potential dollar value of what it is that you're going to be, what, what it is they might recommend is unclear. And that's where we need to spend money to even know what it is. So I think if there's a difference between projects where we have an outcome in play in mind and we can kind of pay at the outset what we think we're likely to spend on it versus projects that are really, um, where, where you have to go through a major process of development before you even know what the price tag might be. Because if the answer is keep it the way it is and pay it, it's much less money than if the answer is put a debt on it, you know, or do something, you know, do something more radical.
So, yeah, so I will say with every one of the presentations we had today, and then we, we saw, we had a lot of really interesting presentations. Um, remember his plan one, the, Aaron's presentations, uh, really all, uh, everything we've seen. There has been an outside consultant in every single one. Uh, and you might say, God, spend a lot of money on consultants, wasting a lot of money on consultants, whatever you want, whatever you want to choose. There are two things that I would say. One is, as a former consultant, uh, I can say that the chances of getting the things done that we want to have done without that outside horsepower and that outside expertise are pretty limited. Uh, if you want to try and do everything yourself, uh, even if you end up hiring, one of the reasons you hire a consultant is that it's a temporary job. And, and you don't want to add full time, you know, permanent staff, or these kinds of things.
Yeah.
Uh, and you don't have the expertise for it. So, um, on, I, I do want to make sure that we understand, and, and anybody who's sat through all of this with us, uh, that we understand that that component, that having that outside expertise and that outside horsepower is vital to the getting anything done.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think, and this is a legitimate issue, and I don't know where I'm landing on what things to do. We are, we are heavily front, front loaded on planning right now.
Yes.
We're doing a lot of planning. The system can't absorb all of that planning for execution.
Yep.
Right, so we've got this much planning going on, and, well frankly, we might have no execution capability. Depending on what happens next year with the potential expense and revenue study.
We are constantly in that.
Constantly.
And I think you can see that when you look at the, when your financial plan, we actually dropped planning, planning's capacity this year because of that issue. When we needed to make budget cuts, we said to the planning department, unfortunately, even if you have the money to do this initial analysis, you're not going to have the money to do the work, so we have to cut something.
And there's a, there's probably some ratio that, uh, of dollars spent on planning, turning into budget for the future, that if we went back historically and looked, there's just a lot of stuff in the front loaded pipeline right now with the planning that, that we can't afford to execute on.
Which you also have to remember too, that then the ultimate, ultimate decisions tend to come out of the C I P predominantly. You know, planning towards one time sort, one time items tends to then manifest in the C I P, which is one time funding, free cash funded, revenue funded in some circumstances, bond funded where necessary, um, and that becomes a different. free cash funded, revenue funded in some circumstances, bond funded where necessary, um, and that becomes a different long-term conversation. For one thing, CIP appropriations carry over, so you can do the thing where you're putting money away time after time, in, in order to ensure that when the time is right to actually execute on the project, and even the bigger tennis courts than the appropriations from, I think, sixteen. Um, you know, those, that, so that process is a little, looks a little different, but you're right, that there are also ultimately long-term impacts on operating costs for whatever is completed, especially if we own it, um, that then have to be taken into consideration.
You're right, during your cover, his plan, which looks forward to fifteen years.
Tell me about it, you know.
So, so you're, you know, you're, uh, you're letting the charge on something that, that has an unknown, a set of unknown consequences and uncosts of them, but it's a perfectly appropriate thing to do, and it'd be a very inappropriate thing not to do.
Well, well, and, and I'll tell you the reason why I, I bring this up is I see the next step of the comp plan is actually zoning, writing zoning, informed by zoning reform. Yeah. That's the money there, like, for example.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Well. It's actually hard to sell the zone, just hope to do it.
Yeah.
If, if, if I may, just to have one more note. Um, there's a certain amount of planning we do, because we have to, because, you know, I mean, I'll never forget being at a meeting of the, the cab where they were discussing the housing, uh, production plan, and, and the consultant starts out by saying, the reason you do a housing production plan is because the state requires you to do a housing production plan. The reason I'm sitting on a open space and, you know, conservation and recreation planning committee right now, master planning committee, is because the state requires us to have, you know, and, and they require us to update it. So that planning, sure, we gotta do it. We can have the debate over whether the state is making good use of these plants at some other time. Um, there was an example in this meeting of how by putting the pressure on for there to be end products to show for our planning, and I'm talking about the presentation unbelievably positive presentation by our DPOW folks about how we are going to turn this ship around a little bit and start seeing more groundwork actually getting done as a proportion of the amount of money we spend on planning to do roadwork and doing roadwork, okay? Um, and I think we just gotta keep that same type of pressure on, and, and, you know, when we launch something being very specific, we expect there to be an end product of this, and if you don't think that there's enough kind of a consensus around what the end product is gonna be, we're not gonna solve the problem by asking, uh, a consultant to clarify our confusion about why, what we think we should do with this parking lot.
No, no.
Because they, the consultant will pro, propose a plan. That's what they get paid to do. It, it might be one that people love, and it might be one that people just say, uh, we're never gonna agree on that, we don't have the money for it.
That means only we can do anything. So, yeah.
Yeah, I, actually, um, with this particular, uh, committee, I'm, um, I've been through, uh, a, a, a lot of, a lot of committees, and looked at, you know, a lot of presentations, with this, of consultants, uh, and with this particular one, um, uh, determined to exercise these strengths on the consultant, so we come back with something that is uh, not going to, uh, create fireworks in the community and is eminently doable.
This is a chest, this is a Chestnut West, uh, learning experience.
Well, no, Chestnut, 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 uh, Chestnut West is a, I know that it looks messy.
With the sausage.
Uh, it is, we're making the sausage in public, the Chestnut West, and so we really didn't have a lot of choice in that. Um, it is a public process, and it is a big, very controversial, you know, topic. Uh, as soon as you affect, you know, you, as soon as you talk about building tall buildings next to somebody's house, they get very upset. Um, but, uh.
Most of the people living near there are dead.
Yeah, that, well, that's.
Like it's a cemetery.
Right there, but, so, uh, yeah, uh, thi- this is a little different. Um, this is not a matter of, uh, engaging the, uh, this is not a, it's controversial, I guess, at least, I, that's not my intention.
It's meant as a compliment. Now, you're applying to some.
Yes.
Well, it'll become controversial once we start.
Yeah, I had a little experience going back before that, too.
Okay, let's start saying the class.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And that's such a, okay, okay, um, unless there's any other discussion.
Did this require a vote?
I agree, I think, to revisit the prior discussion around the, uh, list of town assets, so I was looking through there, and that seems to adjust the buildings, and I understand that's the charge, but I do think it would be useful to also have a list of all town properties, period, whether it's open space or not, because I think part of the work of this committee would be to look at uh, what should we be acquiring or selling, and having a broader idea of what we own where helps in that process.
I, I would just throw in there, there, there is settlements, uh.
Well, and, and parks.
Yeah.
Also, if you go to the assessor's website, there are certain tracts of land relatively small that are designated currently as unbuiltable, I don't know how true that is, but we know a lot more than what was on this list, and I think it would be it would be useful to see the true full list, whether there's building.
The, the twenty eighteen, um, Open Space Conservation Recreation Plan has a complete inventory. It's, and it's amazing how much there is there, uh, of, of sites, and defined by whether it's a chapter ninety-seven sighting or an object in ninety-seven site. Every playground, every park, you know, every open space, every soccer field, yeah, and the list goes on and on and on. That's it, it's in, and it hasn't changed much. I mean, we're updating the plan now, and the first thing everybody can read on is, the list is kind of the same, but.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for being able to draw on the meeting.